I'll have to repeat that since the mic wasn't on. We're coming to order tonight. Today is the Wednesday, October 6, 2010. Regular meeting in the Glendale Planning Commission. Could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Landerga?
Here.
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 Here. A report regarding posting of agenda.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 29, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Would everyone stand and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes. We have two different sessions to approve. First for the September 1 meeting. Any comments or corrections?
I move to accept the minutes of Wednesday, September 1.
Second?
Motion to support call roll for approval of minutes.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, on a vote of three to zero with one abstention, the minutes of September 1 were approved. And now for the minutes of September 15.
I move approval of the minutes of September 15.
Aye, abstain.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye. On a vote of three to zero with one abstention, the minutes of September 15, 2010, were approved. All right. Oral communications. I have no speaker cards. We'll move on to zoning appeals. The next item is an appeal from the decision of the planning hearing officer. This matter is heard as a de novo hearing. Testimony given at the planning hearing officer's hearing should be repeated because the commission does not review the tapes of those meetings. Decisions rendered today will be based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the evidence in the file, including appeal documents, staff reports, and letters received. Individuals speaking today should therefore present all evidence which they may wish this commission to consider. A handout describing the appeals process is available at the front counter. Appeal items are considered as public hearings. The commission will consider testimony from the appellant, applicant, staff, and any member of the public wishing to speak. If you wish to speak, please fill out a card and present it to the recording secretary. The agenda item is 6A. It's a conditional use permit, case number PCUP 2010-001. The location is 730 South Central Avenue. The appellant is David Hasryan. And it is an appeal to the planning commission of a planning hearing officer's decision to limit the billboard corner's hours of operation, which includes selling beer and wine. The appeal is -- the appellant is requesting to increase the hours of operation. Staff is recommending the planning commission sustain the planning hearing officer's decision to approve the conditional use permit with the same conditions, including the hours of operation. Could we have a staff overview, please?
Yes. Members of the board, our -- real quick, I'll do a little review of the plans above you and behind you. The project is located, if you look on our zoning map, here in South Glendale, the northeast corner of Windsor and Central. The actual location of the site is -- the billiard place is right over in this corner. It's an existing billiard hall that was approved by a conditional use permit. It expires in 2013. The applicant came back and now wants to have alcohol sales. So again, as you can see, it's up in this corner. Here's the floor plan as it's blown up here. Now, the facility is located in a two-story L-shaped shopping center, and there's sub-train parking below all the parking that you see on the surface. The neighborhood is in commercial, except immediately east. Immediately east here, you'll see it's an R-1250, excuse me, R-1650 zone, a multifamily residential, but you have commercial on north, south, and west. As far as some quick background on it, the applicant came in and their hours of operation, which I've noted here on the staff report, page three, is they had two different types of things here. Billiards hall operation was going to be Sunday through Wednesday from 1:00 p.m. in the afternoon to 12:00 a.m. That's on page three, sir. And on Thursday through Saturday, 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. And that was just the operation of the billiards hall. And then they were going to come in, ask for this beer and wine sales with different hours. Sunday through Wednesday, 1:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. So they shut down the beer sales one hour before. And Thursday through Saturday, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., which would be two hours. Now during discussions with the planning hearing officer and the police department, the police said, you know, we really need coinciding hours of operation in beer and wine sales because there's no way to really enforce this. Well, the applicant can understood that. He didn't have a problem with it. And the hearing officer brought that up and had a long discussion about it. And so also during that discussion, which I've noted in the staff report, the hearing officer brought up the point of should we, can we reduce the hours? Could this be considered? And the applicant said, yes, they would consider it. And so the hearing officer wrote a decision approving the project with reduced hours that coincide. So there's no issue about coinciding of beer and wine sales and operation of billiards hall. The whole issue is that the hours are too short. The applicant feels that his business will suffer for it. And of course, as part of the appeal, their argument was that the applicant, that the hearing officer didn't take into consideration the issues that you see on any traditional appeal that he checked off, and that's on page four. So the planning department feels that the decision by the hearing officer is appropriate. And the staff basically is recommending that the planning commission support the planning hearing officer's decision. And we do have some motions, actually have a lot of motions. Basically, you can approve what the hearing officer already had, and then there's a couple of alternatives, and then you can deny as well. One of the things, this as a note that we have in the staff report, originally for the first hearing, the staff had recommended a denial for the project. They didn't want the beer and wine sales. But the hearing officer felt that sales of beer and wine would be appropriate here. The reason staff didn't feel it'd be appropriate is because we're introducing a new beer and wine establishment, not taking over from one establishment to another. We're doing a new establishment. There's a high crime rate. And we had a problem with the fact that under the previous approval, though it seems minor on its face, it was supposed to be a sign posted stating that no one under the -- I have to look at it right now, but there's an age limit. They put the sign saying no one can come there without a guardian parent or something of that nature. And that wasn't posted when staff inspected the site. We just felt, a couple of years later, it should have been posted, that with the high crime rate, not with this facility. They don't have the high crime rates, just the neighborhood high crime rate and the establishment of a new facility that serves beer and wine in that area. So we felt that was our recommendation originally, but that was not recognized. The hearing officer approved it, but he reduced the hours. And now the applicant is saying, that's not going to help my business and asking for extended hours, as noted in your staff report on pages three and four. That pretty much concludes my comments. You can go through it in more detail if you'd like. Just let me know.
Any questions for staff at this moment? You can return to your seat, I imagine.
So tell me what the request is, the hours right now?
Yes, all right. So when the applicant -- all right, so let's go to page three. On page three, you'll notice that we have three different areas where hours. And then on the top of page four, on the flip side, you'll see it's off there, but that's the other part. So we'll look at the undersumming of planning hearing officer's decision. The hours limited by the hearing officer were Sunday through Wednesday, 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Thursday through Saturday, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Now, if you compare those hours to ones above, under the analysis section, you can see the -- how the differences are here. Now, the applicant in their appeal saying, all right, we'll have the coincide hours, but let's go down here and have Sunday through Wednesday, 1:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. And Thursday through Saturday, 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. So that's his counterproposal, and that's what this appeal is requesting now. He's asking for -- he's asking two hours longer from Sunday through Wednesday. And he's asking for one hour extra on--
On weekends.
On the weekends, Thursday through Saturday.
So those hours, the ones you just mentioned, that coincides with the officer's recommendation?
Yes. The officer's issue is more coinciding. Whatever hours are chosen, for enforcement purposes, they want the hours to coincide because they feel that it's not enforceable to have a set of hours here for stopping beer and wine sales and then going until a later hour staying open. Because how do you, unless somebody's standing inside there making sure that no one's coming and says, can I just have one more? You don't close until 2:00 type of thing. So the coinciding of hours are not the issue. And I think the police department really didn't have the concerns on the hours as much as the coinciding of the hours. That was the big issue for them. Did that answer, sir?
Yeah, because it's going to be hard for them to track it.
That's correct, sir. You have to be on-site. You have to constantly monitor, and if something comes up, how do you monitor that? So that was their difficulty.
Or, I mean, they can do like a once, once in a while check, something like that. Is that off the table for them as well?
Well, I think they could respond more to that, but it's -- I think the ideal situation is a self-enforcing type of condition. Otherwise, you have enforcement personnel, whether it be just police or the neighborhood services, having to go down there and do spot checks. And they're so spread, so thin right now, it's hard to be able to do that.
And--
And they may do that, I don't know. And we do have an officer here. Now, in all fairness to him, this officer is not the officer who appeared at the hearing. He's familiar with the concepts, but maybe not all the details.
Right.
So I spoke with him just before the hearing, so he has an understanding, but I told him I would help him out on the details on that.
Let me interject. I was -- the hearing officer needs the mic on. And in, during the hearing, I asked Lieutenant Fox, because, you know, most of us are familiar -- well, I shouldn't say that. It's familiar, it's common, the last call for alcohol, meaning it stops at 12:30, and the business stays open at 1:00. And we had a discussion on that. And Lieutenant Fox's preference was that alcohol sales stopped at the same time the business closed, like Chris was saying, from an enforcement, ease of enforcement.
Is that specifically recommended for this business, or is that usually how it's like with all businesses in Glendale?
Well, I can't speak for all businesses in Glendale, just from--
I mean, is that like a Glendale-wide recommendation policy, or just this neighborhood specifically?
That's probably something that you would need to ask the police department. This was the hearing that I was conducting, and in the discussion, that's what Lieutenant Fox stated was his preference for this situation. I don't know whether that's common throughout the city.
The CUP that's currently in effect and this CUP don't terminate at the same time, or did you modify this, the CUP that we're hearing today to expire at the same time as the other CUP?
It's right there. I have the file.
You don't recall?
Let's check the file, yeah.
Because it seems like it would make sense that whether you did it, maybe we might want to consider to have them in parallel.
Right. There was some discussion at the hearing. The police department in the discussion suggested a one-year approval of the CUP, you know, in case there were problems or issues. And I believe that, and let me just double-check, I don't think I approved a one-year, I think it was a two-year.
You went two-year. I see it here.
Yeah.
Or at least that's the current motion in front of us, is two-years.
Yeah. That's, they had initially suggested one year, and I approved a two-year CUP.
And part of the one-year aspect was they still have to get their approvals from the Liquor Control Commission, right?
Yeah, yeah, they need that.
And that takes some time to get that--
Sure. And I was just, one year's a fairly short time period, and I don't, I don't know that we have done that in the past with that short of a time.
And of course, the bigger question, and I always enjoy this situation, in terms of when staff and a hearing officer disagree, that we went into this with the idea that staff's recommendation was no to beer and wine.
Correct.
So actually, that's in front of us again today. It's not just the condition of our hours of operation. What's in front of us is whether we should even consider the beer and wine portion of it. The whole thing is in front of us, right?
That's my understanding.
That's one of the motions we have.
That's one of the motions is to deny.
Right. So, you know, we have a, it's not just the narrow picture of a couple hours of operations, the whole concept of beer and wine.
Right. You're basically deciding on what I heard in June.
So you knew when you sat down in June for your hearing what the staff recommendation was?
I did.
And when staff developed that, were you part of that conversation?
I was not.
Okay. So you were isolated from whatever that discussion was?
Correct.
So then you had the hearing, and you formed your own opinion based on whatever had been presented in that hearing?
Correct.
Okay. So now that said, I'll look to the, apparently, let me clarify, were you part of the staff that formed the initial opinion?
I am the staff.
You were the staff? Okay.
I mean, we have lots of senior staff--
Do you use the word "we" when you describe yourself at that time?
Only when I want to hide, sir, so I--
Okay.
But basically, no, there's several staff persons that, senior staff that do review my stuff. In fact, there's two senior staff persons that do review work. That's a standard thing that we all do. You know, it goes up the chain, everybody looks at to make sure. We try to avoid all those typos and other little grammatical errors that happen.
Right. So to recap, and I think you kind of hit on it somewhat in your opening statements, your concerns or staff's concerns--
Yes, sir, staff's concerns.
To give yourself more of a blanket of authority, was basically because of the number of liquor establishments already open, or restated, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, sir. The comments that I have, actually, this is my, the report here that went, and I think you may have a copy, I'm hoping, but we have comments from other city departments. So here's the police department's. Now, we have over-concentration establishments serving alcohol in the census tract where the business is located, Part 1 crimes, these are felonies is what Part 1 is, exceed the citywide average by 141 percent in the census tract. Shopping center has been seen on numerous calls for individuals that are drunk or drinking. Let me just segue for a second. This does not include this establishment. This is just the shopping center. They have not had any of these calls. I think that was one of the issues that was raised during the hearing, that yes, maybe the shopping center has a problem, but we don't have a problem. The business is located in a recessed, now this was a staff office, well, no, actually this is a police comment. Business is located in a recessed corner. The shopping center difficult to see and monitor, if you note on the floor plan there. The emergency exit leads to a fenced area, making evacuations difficult. The fire department has taken care of that, though. That came back in the original CUP. And there was a comment that there are schools located within 1,500 feet of the business. Those are the comments that we had at the time. So we were looking at those. There were some additional comments, but police and staff, the planning department, myself, worked with the police department at the time to kind of clean up and narrow down what they felt were the most difficult ones. And then staff had that concern about that condition, which it was a mind, you know, the condition is without-- The sign condition. Yeah, the sign condition. I mean, I could just read it. I know I'm kind of meandering, but at least this way we can know what--
Page four.
Yes, ma'am, but I was looking at that condition that I have--
For the exact language.
For the exact language of the condition of the previous one. Okay, condition 17 of conditional use permit, PCUP 2008-009. That sign shall be maintained at the entries to the billiard hall indicating no admittance to anyone under 18 years of age unless accompanied by an adult or parent. Now, the applicant states, and understandably so, that their biggest clientele are young adults, young people. So that's one of the things that I thought was important, is that this is attracting a younger group of people, they're not middle-aged guys like myself or older like myself. So it's, it may be hard to between a 19, 18, 17-year-old type of thing, and so we're, we thought that was important, and it just wasn't there.
So this is from the July ruling?
Yes, sir.
They've been allowed to sell beer and wine since July of this year?
I do not believe so because they're under appeal.
So when, what is the extent of the time they've been required to put that sign up?
Since, what was it, 2002?
They were, no, 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 eight.
2008.
June 16th?
Oh, right.
2008, right. And in January of 2010 is when I made the notice, when I went out and did the field inspection for the new application for beer and wine. So 2008, July, June, that's when the condition was required. And then in January 2010, when the new application for beer and wine came in, I went out and did the standard field inspection, and I noticed that it wasn't there.
And the 2008 CUP was to allow the establishment of a billiards hall?
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that CUP is what generated the condition regarding the sign.
Right.
And that sign, when Chris went out to do an inspection for the current application, was not posted.
Right.
Ms. Landerga?
Thank you. I was going to ask, has that been remedied after you brought it to their attentions? And the second thing is you, there's a liquor store in this complex.
There shouldn't be. I don't believe there's--
There's not?
No, ma'am. There's one across the street.
Okay, it was across the street.
Yeah, to the west of--
But there has been drunken activity in this parking lot.
There has been, yes, that's what the police had stated.
Now, at this moment, is there a security guard on this property for any reason at all?
For the, okay, now for the property itself, that's a good question. I haven't followed up on that part. Because the property itself, there's a two-story shopping center, and there isn't any alcohol sale businesses there. If they have a security guard, I am not aware what the management company has. I do not think they, they were not required a security guard for the billiards hall, that I understand. So for the billiards hall--
For the 2008 CUP for billiards hall?
There isn't any requirement for a security person, as I recall, for that. But whether the rest of the shopping centers, I don't know the--
The current CUP calls for them to have a secur, the current application--
Correct.
That's in front of us, calls for them to have a security guard, but not for the grounds, rather for their space, correct?
So the alcohol consumption on the premises occurs without even an alcohol license on the premise?
No.
The public drunkenness in the parking lot?
Yes.
Yes. If there are no, if there are no businesses selling or serving alcohol on that site now, then any public drunkenness comes from whoever's drunk importing the alcohol themselves onto the site.
Something about that parking lot has made it attractive for someone to bring alcohol onto the site.
Right. Or just being intoxicated when they walk on the site.
Right.
Yeah.
So they, but again, police didn't have any record of this establishment. I think that was an issue during the hearing that we--
Was there something else right now, Ms. Landerga?
No, that was--
Mr. Sheets, you had something?
I just, I wanted to kind of take off on Eric's point. Is alcohol being served at the billiard hall currently?
Not to my knowledge. Not to my, it's not authorized now. They don't have an approval until--
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be sure. We kind of got twisted on--
No, I understand.
Sequence, so I wanted to be--
I had not thought of that issue. That's why I'm sounding a little bit vague, but they don't have an approval.
So the sign for minors, it's because it's a billiard establishment?
That is correct, sir.
It's because it was required at the 2008 CUP approval.
Because of billiard establishment, you can't have people under the age of 18?
Yes, sir. And that's actually in our code, not for the sign, but no persons there. Part of the approval was post the sign stating that.
Right. Okay, I have two more questions. Have neighbors been notified?
Yes.
This application?
Yes, there's been--
About this hearing?
We have a mail out of that.
And how many, how many neighbors are notified?
Within 500 feet. I can go look at the list right now, but within 500 feet, all property owners. There's a difference between resident and property owners.
Okay.
That's a code requirement.
Property owners.
Property owners, within 500 feet of this property were notified. And I can give you that list, we can go through the file right now.
And my second question is, in the report, it mentioned there was a courtyard that a condition would be to, that the owner would not allow for congregations to happen in the courtyard. What courtyard are we exactly talking about?
Yes, sir. When I show you, we have, it's right here. You'll look on the larger plan, parking lot, this area right here, open to the sky, and you can see it right here. It's this little area. We're calling it a courtyard. I'm not sure if that's a proper way, but it's an open-to-the-sky area right here. And this walks right out to this parking lot.
And that courtyard, that would be a condition attached to this appeal. It's not, it's not--
Sure.
They're not required to prevent people from congregating there right now?
For the billiards hall? I don't believe there's anything in our file about that, no.
Okay.
Or under the CUP.
Yeah. Okay.
Did you all want to look at the photographs? This is photographs of your chair.
Thank you. Did you see the other ones already? No, just the first one, just so we all look at them at one time. Yes, please.
I think Mr. Sanin has a very interesting point of notification. When you post, or there is a posted sign on the property--
Correct.
Where is that sign posted?
It's on Central Avenue.
Thank you.
I went and checked it yesterday, just to verify. I mean, I talked to the applicant and told him it was up, and then I went out yesterday just to double-check. The billiard was yesterday.
Going back to the concept of minors and adults and so on, so the restriction was a minor can't go in unless he's accompanied, not just by, not a parent, but actually an adult. So a bunch of 18, 19-year-olds, well, actually, 17, 16, 17-year-olds could go in as long as they were accompanied by a 21-year-old someone.
Actually, sir, the way our billiards hall code is, that's not exactly correct. Let me just look--
That's why we ask.
All right, sir. Get that, it's in your--
I'm really rusty on the billiards code.
Me, too.
If you don't mind.
I have one game in here.
Now, the way the condition was written is an adult or parent, but I think it may be more restrictive in the code. But anyway, Roger's going to get the, our large municipal code because it's, that section on billiards is not in the zoning code. It's under a separate section for billiard code, billiard halls.
Right, because, I mean, you know, part of my, you know, part of my thought process is, it's one thing in terms of billiards, it's another in terms of minors, adult drinking, and so on. So I just wanted to know where we were starting with in terms of the city.
Yes, sir.
Now, we can come back to that. Now, we can come back to that-
Yes, sir.
Once we find it in the code. There's no reason to belabor that for now. Any other questions right now for staff? All right, we'll allow the appellant time to present their case. You have two cards, gentlemen, that are related. Your team, you have up to fifteen minutes to talk about your appeal. It's Mr. Oatway and Mr. Haziran.
Nice to meet you. My name's Nicholas Oatway. I'm the architect and applicant for the appellant, or however we want to describe it. I have three points, just off the bat, that I'd like to address. The first one is the allusion to a high crime rate that the planner, staff person alluded to. I, I'm hypothesizing here, perhaps, but the original approval given by Mr. Kiesel may have been largely based on Lieutenant Fox, who arrived in his vacation time to speak in support of our CUP. The reason he did was that the high crime rate that was reported was based on a lease base that sold liquor that is no longer there in the existing location, not the exact space, but the same commercial area. And that, that actual record of crime has been significantly reduced in this neighborhood. And he spoke, I might use the word strongly, in support of what we were trying to do. And that's number one. Number two is, talks about the hours that got somewhat clouded by the, by the meeting, and we're trying to straighten out this afternoon. I'm talking about the lines in the staff report on page four, the bottom paragraph, where it says, "The hearing officer specifically discussed hours of operation for weekdays, Sunday through Wednesday, and weekends, Thursday through Saturday, with the appellant and his consultant at the hearing, and asked if reducing them would be acceptable." What was discussed and came from Mr. Kiesel was a phrase that started, "For example, the hours could be thus to thus." No specific numbers were said, "That's absolutely it." And when it came back, that ten o'clock, the specific hour that was discussed, Sunday through Wednesday, ending the operation of the business and the sale of beer at ten o'clock, was really what we're, what we're here to ask for relief from. What we want to do is, and are willing to do, we'd even be willing to start the time of operation later, like 2:00 PM, to, instead of 10:00 PM, to midnight. Now, this obviously is in conflict, perhaps, with the police department's request that the sale of beer and wine and the operation close at the same time. But we'd be willing to stop the beer and wine operation at ten, but be able to stay in business until midnight. Because many of the people who come to Davit's Billiards to play are people who are already either in college or out of college. They're twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and plus, and they have jobs, and they get off jobs at eight or nine in the evening, and they want to play billiards. And if it closes at ten, this is a substantial reduction in the possibility of the business continuing successfully. That's the, that's the second item, was just our feeling that, in the staff report, it indicates that hard and fast ideas of what the hours were going to be were decided at that hearing with us in front of the hearing officer. And this is really not the case. That's one of the things we're trying to solve this afternoon. And so, three, my third relates also to the hours. And as I will reiterate, one of the things we like to do, I understand you're looking at the whole issue of whether beer and wine is going to be possible or allowed by your, your commission at all, but in our mind, what we're most interested in, if you are willing to go along with the decision, the original decision of the hearing officer, is to discuss the hours. And Sunday through Wednesday, we'd, we'd be willing to start later, but we'd like to end later than 10:00 PM with the billiards. We would, we could stop the sale of the beer and wine at ten, if that was a decision that the commission could make. And Thursday through Saturday, the times are perfectly, we're willing to go along with what's already been decided by the hearing officer. I'd like Davit to add some information that may be of value to you regarding the, his business. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
My name is Davit Haziran, and I'm the owner of the Milliards Corner. I just want to talk about the business, and I agree with the Roger Kiesel, how he grant me with my beer and wine. I was appreciated to that. But the thing was, the billiard, the place where they made, it was 2008, and we made it for the main thing is that people play billiard there, not the serve the alcohol and get drunk people there. We just want to make the billiards hall, we want to add the beer there, so we get more business on the billiard, not on the beer. So, what happens? We get the beer, but we're reducing the hours. I told Roger Kiesel, I can reduce the hours. We reduced it. Before, we was working one to two. Then I told them, we can work one to twelve, and we start work one to twelve. And they took out two more hours, and it happens one to ten. So, I have a competitions that the billiards halls work, they working until twelve or two. So, when the people comes there, and I close ten o'clock, what happens? People not going to go in my business anymore, because they're going to know, they're going to come nine o'clock, they're going to start play, they're going to have a some eat there, and I'm going to close in an hour, and they're going to think, why we go there? Can go there another place that's near me, it's in the Brown Boulevard, Charles Billiards. We can have there until twelve or two, is the hours operation of them. What I want, I just want my business grows up. When I'm getting the beer, it should be grow up my business. And when I'm cutting the times, it's not growing up the business, it stops the, stops my business. So, when you're making a new business, two years, I'm hardly working on that business. I made all the permits, I went all the construction with all, with all the paperwork, with the city, everything. I went with you guys, and I just want to push my business up. Now, the situation is the people, a lot of people now working here. A lot of people, they, they not spending money on that kind of places. But the beer I'm putting for get more people there to play the billiard, not to get the drunk there. So, the whole, whole point of there is to play a billiard, so that's the whole point. And they give me conditions to have three employees there, one security and two employees inside of the property. Keep the three, three employees is not the easiest thing. I say, okay, I can take it, no problem. I can take three employees, but if it's at ten o'clock, it's kind of, I don't know, I cannot imagine how it going to work. I cannot imagine how it's going to work with those conditions. I'm okay with those conditions, but what I need, just I need two more hours more to my billiard. That's it. I want to finish up twelve. I can stop the beer ten. I'm saying again, I'm not making there, over there bar. It's a whole point of there, it's a, main thing is to play billiard there, not to drink. The beer is over there for take more customers there to play there, stay longer there. But when we're reducing the hours, comes equaling the same as it's now. So, whole point was it. I'm, I can have a security there, and in the condition, it says, the security, I'm always there. Two years, we are there, and I don't have any problems. Neighbor, I don't know about the neighbor, what is it, what it was before, the crimes were high. I don't have any problem in the shopping plaza with the neighbors, with the residents, never we do, we, never was something, no calls to police department, because we don't have any problems with them. I'm controlling as hard as I can, and I'm always there to control the business. I did that business to, like, get real good business in City of Glendale, not that just the business have a business, that's it. My mind is to have a real good business that is working properly. And I was working properly two years. I have no complaints on you, on me, no complaints on the billiard, no complaints from customers, nothing was happened. Just what I'm asking, just get, I just want to long a little bit longer, two hours more, because, so I can grow up the business. That's all what I want.
Got a question, Ms. Landerga?
Yes, Mr. Haziran.
Yes.
Charles Billiards, do they have an alcohol license?
Full liquor.
They have a full liquor license, and that, not just beer and wine they-
Yes.
Thank you.
So, your current hours of operation are?
Right now?
Yeah.
Right now, it was, before the beer and wine, it was one to two, it was one to two, but we cut off-
Every day?
Yeah, seven days. I cut off to twelve, to show you guys that I can cut to twelve. And if I take two more hours, in two hours with the five tables, it's losing money. And Chris asked me, when is your, Kiesel, Mr. Kiesel asked me, when is your busy time? I told him, depends the day, weekdays, it's six, seven o'clock starts, nine-thirty, ten, finished up. And why he put ten o'clock? I'm not saying he put wrong. No, he did right, but maybe it was my mistake that I didn't tell him, you know, Mr. Roger, people are staying there, two table, one table, three table, it's not a busy time, but people stay there and play there until twelve. So, what I just want to do to grow up my business is a business, right business, properly. I just don't want to get there drunk people or have some, because in two years, I know I'm going to have a CUP to renew for the beer and wine. If I have a problem there, nobody's going to renew it for me. If you're doing a business, you need to think smart, and I think I, I was thinking smart in these two years, because I never had the problem over there. It depends, you have alcohol or not, it's the people there. If you make, if you're not controlled there, you can have a problem. Everybody, everywhere, in restaurant, in nightclub, in billiards hall. But when you have a liquor there, you're putting some security there, more employees, so control is going to be much better and much more for the beer. The whole point is to grow up the business, not to get drunk people there or get bar there. I cannot get bar there, because people going to work, play there. And I have some game there, it's a Russian pyramid billiard, it's not like a pool, that you know, guys. It's a different game, and it takes one hour to play one, one game. So, what I'm saying, people want, they can come nine, and they play one up, one hour, just the one game, and then I'm going to say them, you know, guys, you need to leave. They're going to go another place. So logically, they're going to go another place. That's the whole point. And the beer I want there, so get more business, not to make drunk people settle.
Other questions for the speaker? I, I have one. Just the nature of what's going on. You have a billiards establishment, you've got young people coming in, relatively young people, coming in. You don't have a beer license, you don't have a liquor license, your competitors do. You seen people coming in with the brown bags. Are you turning, are you finding yourself having to turn, you know, a nigh away from people that might be drinking while they're playing?
There, nobody getting anything into the facility.
Okay, so you haven't seen that as a problem?
He comes, if so, if he comes with the bag, either if it's like water, I'm saying no food or drink allowed from outside. We're not letting them. First of all, why I'm not doing it? Maybe it can be the alcohol. Second of all, it's a business. I have all that stuff, water, sodas.
So, you're not letting people play the old, oh, yeah, it's water in this thing of odd?
Right, because I'm selling it, let's say, two dollar, Jones or Albertson is going to sell it one dollar. So, I need to make money, too. It's in my interest, too, to not letting go with their items.
Understood. What, what sort of food do you, what do you currently serve, and what are you intending to serve along with the-
I have sandwiches, like ten sandwiches, different sandwiches. We have salads there.
That you make on site, or that they're brought in?
No, it's brought in. No, we're just making it right away. We have a kitchen. So, we have, we have a coffee, tea, that's it.
Any other questions right now? Anything else you wanted to say at this time, sir?
What is it?
You will have, anything you want to say at this time. You'll also have a rebuttal period shortly as well.
I see that, huh?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a one-speaker card, it's Margaret Hammond.
My name is Margaret Hammond, and I've lived in Glendale fifty years, as you well know. And that area is my stomping ground, so to speak. Number one, I want to say this. Remember all the headlines, all the conversation? The police department are at their wits' end with young people with drugs and alcohol, overindulging. That is the big thing they talk about all the time. What are we going to do? It's a plague. Now, here we are in a, saying to a billiard hall, where there will be eighteen or younger people can be there with a guardian, and you're going to be serving beer and wine. I don't think that's a good atmosphere for young boys to be in. It's mostly boys, I'm sure, young men. Now, right in here, it says that it's, the establishment would be a new addition to the number of business allowed. It's already an over-concentration. There are already ten in that area, and you're going to allow another one? And there's only supposed to be six. I think this is ridiculous. And then, to top it off, is the idea that, who is going to supervise and make sure who is bringing in those boys that are underage? I've got a grandson, and he is a, I'm not going to say what he is, but I remember, I had him since he was seventeen, and I saw him buying liquor down at the store at the corner, and he can get it whenever he wants. So, all this thing about, oh, no, we're not going to allow the young ones in there to drink. Hello? If a twenty-one-year-old buys it, you mean to say that that sixteen or seventeen won't be able to have a few sips out of it? Forget that. I know that stuff. And the other thing is, if they didn't even have a sign posted as to the age, that they didn't post the sign that they were supposed to, then what the heck? I mean, there it is already. But I, again, I remember, the big problem, it states right here, 141%. We're in the most congested area down there. I keep saying this, forty percent of the population of 200,000 is 80,000, and that's all below Colorado. We're jammed in there with like wraps and, and traps. And then you have all these additional liquors and young people that live in the area are going to be subject to even more, um, shall I say temptation? Don't get me wrong, I'm not one of those that goes around, whatever they call them, prohibitionists or whatever, no. But I do think there's common sense when it comes to young people drinking or where they are, can get, drink. We have enough trouble at them going into the 7-Elevens or whatever and, and getting it because they have false ID. Keep, my grandson showed me, he got them from his buddies or whatever, they say they lose them, then they have that to show. So all I'm saying is who is going to be checking that ID to know that they are 21? So I really feel very strongly and it, all right, there isn't crime there now maybe, or if there is, you don't think there's gonna be more with them drinking and fighting and carrying on? And also if they get out at 12 o'clock, who knows who's, is somebody counting how much they have to drink? They're all gonna be getting out at the same time and driving. You don't think that's gonna add to the problems in that area? And also I would like to bring up the, the subject about who was notified. Uh, on this other case, when I looked at who was notified that supposedly were within 500 feet, there's over 50% of the people do not even live in the neighborhood that were notified. The tenants along Yelk, they were not notified. Oh well, that's the state law, that's whatever. I'm saying, is that the same case here? That were the people who live there, who are going to be, have problems with all of this, were they notified? Or was it just some owner that lives in, down in, up in Calabasas or down in Redondo Beach? So again, you see, uh, this is not good because there are holes, there's holes that these things fall through. And this could be one of them, that I don't know about the people that are, that are in the neighborhood, whether they have been notified, whether they are owners or whether they're people that are tenants and live there, unfortunately, uh, close to this situation that could be really unhappy and affect their quality of life. Uh, there's nobody to speak up for people down there. I mean, Adams Hill is the only homeowners in that, out of 80,000 people, we represent 800. What about the rest of them that are jammed down in that area? We, I'm just saying. And, and nobody gets up to speak up. Some of them will say, they phone me and tell me, I say, well, you go and complain. I do enough complaining on my own. You get up and speak, oh, I don't wanna do that, I'm afraid, I don't wanna be, okay, then you have to put up with it. I do speak up for what I think is right. But I'm saying, it's amazing how they're, I don't know where the, where, why aren't there any tenants here? Just as there isn't for the other situation. It's unbelievable. You can't tell me that people living along in apartments, 200 of them, that there isn't one of them because they were not notified with a notified letter. The, the owners were, the owners were, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying the people that have to live with this were not notified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. All right, no, no other speaker cards. Um, I'd like to hear from staff in terms of anything that the, that they might wanna add or comment to in terms of the appellant's presentation.
From our municipal code, um, I'll read you the restrictions on attendance of minors and this is in our billiard hall chapter 5.24. Uh, no person under the age of 18 shall be in, remain in, enter or visit any billiard room unless accompanied by his or her parent or guardian. Uh, B, no person having charge or control of any billiard room shall permit or allow any person under the age of 18 to be in, remain in, enter or visit any billiard room unless such minor person is accompanied by his or her parent. And also C, no person shall represent himself or herself to have reached the age of 18 in order to obtain admission to such billiard room or to be permitted to remain therein when such person in fact is under 18 years of age. So those are the restrictions we have in our municipal code.
So nothing, well, of course, that's billiards, so it has nothing to do with 18 to 21 and drinking, so, okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Public notices?
Public, yeah. Public notices, um, are sent to property owners within 500 feet. That's, um, what our municipal code says that we need to do.
And one of the, one of the things they've done recently with the large, were you trying to say something, Mr. Foy? Okay. If you want to after I'm completed, just let me know. Yeah, with the large signs is to help, you know, raise the awareness that there's hearings going on.
Right.
For people that may not be noticed under the other versions.
Right, that's a relatively, relatively new requirement.
I didn't even see that sign when I went there today. I missed it. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying it's not there, but I just missed it.
Yeah, perhaps at some point in the future, we opt to do brighter colors or something.
I didn't see them either.
Yeah. Um, all right. Anything else from staff at this time?
Um, you know, let me just, I, I wouldn't clarify, I wouldn't, during the hearing, I, I would not say that Lieutenant Fox was strongly supportive of it. He was not, um, he was not against it, given our discussion back and forth and, um, the, the discussion included hours of operation and the coexisting of closing time with alcohol sales. Um, that discussion, he was not opposed. I'm not sure I would classify his position as strongly in favor. And the other thing is, um, during the, during the discussion, uh, the applicant is correct in that I don't recall giving certain, certain times of when, um, I would recommend having the billiard hall closing. That was just a general discussion of, would you consider reducing your hours of operation? So I, I would concur with his assessment there. And also, um, you know, based on, on what he said were his busiest hours, um, that was the main reason why I came up with the hours I came up with. But additionally, um, I considered, um, the fact that this area really isn't in a heavily, an area heavily populated with entertainment type uses. Um, it's, it's in a shopping center that I don't think any of the businesses stay open past nine. And, you know, that entered in my discussion and it was part of downtown where there are movie theaters or, um, you know, lots of restaurants or other sorts of uses, um, entertainment related. So that was another thing that entered in my thought process in coming up with the hours
The applicant said one thing about Lieutenant Fox talking about how most of the crime happened because of a liquor store that closed down. And how applicant was hypothesizing that it may have changed your, um, decision on the, on the issue. Is that true, first of all? And then did Lieutenant Fox talk about how most of the crime did come from a liquor store? And what were the, what was the context around that liquor store and where was it?
Sure, I mean, that, that entered in my decision because the staff report that, um, that was given to me, um, for the public hearing recommended denial. And so, um, the fact that, um, a portion of the, the crime that was reported in that area came from a business that had since closed, that, that made, um, uh, from a report that recommended denial to a decision that was approval with some conditions and that was one of the things that, you know, swayed me.
But, but in all of that situation you just described, was there any reason to believe that the business that was there added or decreased the crime? I mean, are we talking about specifics that happened at the past business that would've been problems and would've impacted the crime rate or?
I think, I'm not sure if I understand your question correctly.
Just kind of building off of Eric's point that?
There, there was a business that was located in the area, in that census tract.
Okay.
That had generated, um, had generated crime that had since closed. And that was one of the reasons why the current number of, I think it was 140% over.
Right. 224 crimes.
That's, that's one of the reasons why it was so high. That business was not a responsible business. The business had since closed and so, um, there, there was a reduction.
So that specific business, I mean, do we know, like, it was contributing that 20 extra or 30 extra?
I, um, I don't, I don't recall.
Just wanna see.
And I don't think that Lieutenant Fox at the time, um, stated a specific number.
But his observation was that when that closed, he saw a decrease in crime? And he didn't seem like he was concerned enough that maybe this would take over for that?
Um.
For that gap again?
He wasn't, you're saying, he wasn't concerned that this new business with alcohol sales?
Did he show any concerns? Yeah. With the, would fill in that gap again?
Um, no. With, um, the, he was concerned about, um, the coinciding of hours and alcohol sales with the conditions that were placed on the approval of the CUP for alcohol, he, he was not concerned.
Mr. Foy, you had some?
I, I would just note that Lieutenant Fox's replacement, Lieutenant Davies, is here in the audience tonight.
I guess one other thing, and I, I think I've said this before, Lieutenant Fox did, um, suggest the, the one-year time limit for the CUP and I went with a two-year, but...
Okay. Well, first off, let me interject. Mr. Baxter was part of the original staff report. We also have Mr. Foy here. I understand that Mr. Baxter has an event that he'd like to get away to and I'm just gonna ask, is it, am I correct on that?
He doesn't know about it.
Oh, you.
Actually, it's my event.
Oh, you're stuck then, I'm sorry. I thought, I was confused, I was confused on who wanted to get out of here, so.
We all do.
All right. I was trying, I, I was, I was trying my best to help you out on that, so.
Forward and upward.
If, if Mr. Baxter would like to go instead of you, probably wouldn't have the same impact, I know. All right. I'm sorry about that.
My daughter who's turning two today would be a little bit surprised if he showed up.
Maybe. I think your wife would.
If she was young, if at a year, he might've gotten away with it, okay. I was confused on who needed to get out of here, but, all right, we'll continue on. I'm sorry to interject. Ms. Landerga?
Um, Mr. Kiesel, a couple of questions. On page two, you, you state typically alcohol sales and entertainment type uses such as billiards, corner would be detrimental to the public health or safety and the general welfare due to patron drunkenness, noise or customer congregation. Conditions placed on the approval will reduce the potential for these deleterious impacts to occur. Uh, one of, and it continues and I'll not read it again, but, uh, the, it does say this condition will help address a concern of the police department who cited the difficulty seeing into the establishment from the parking lot. Isn't this a two-story parking lot? Isn't there underground parking? And isn't this?
There is underground parking, yes.
And isn't it gated parking?
Yeah, yes.
So would it be most equally difficult for the, and we can ask the officer who's here, for them to see in underground if there's anything going on? I mean, it seems, I'm just asking questions here because it seems that the conditions don't address all of those issues there. And I'm assuming those conditions are the security, um, personnel.
Mm-hmm. The security personnel, the, uh, reduction in hours of operation and the, um, the consistent hours of operation and alcohol, and alcohol sales.
All right, those were my questions, just because it seems to me that if there's, we're sort of assuming this is a surface parking lot. If, if there's activities below it too, nobody's gonna see it.
I, I am gonna be interested during your rebuttal period, if you could address first, what happens with the parking? Act great, do the gates go up? What times? Talk about that in your rebuttal if you wouldn't mind, please. Not now, in a few moments.
But that is a, a question I have, just about.
I, I would like to ask the, uh, police representative to come up. Sitting in the back and undercover, we didn't realize.
I am. Good evening, I'm Steve Davy, uh, the new Bruce Fox.
Oh, hi.
Nice to meet everybody, sure.
Okay. When you say you're the new Bruce Fox, are you, are you familiar with this particular hearing?
Only from what, uh, Mr. Baxter had told me prior to the hearing. Was actually expecting to hear more on, uh, audio, uh, which was the reason I arrived. But, uh, I'm familiar with the questions you have. Unfortunately, I don't have the statistics, uh, that you're inquiring about as far as calls for service and the crime rate and the reduction of, I can easily have that tomorrow morning. And, uh, I think the commissioner wants to take it under submission and I could provide, provide that to you as to what exactly happened. But I do have one comment that I was just burning to make. Uh, it's, in the police department's opinion, uh, and Bruce Fox had it right on the head, alcohol sales and closure time have to coincide. Uh, it's, it's an impossibility to police. We can police it. I can send my vice officers in there, uh, to police the fact that they're selling after they're required to close, you know, alcohol sales, but yet remain open. It's just a very difficult thing. Even the bars that we have in town, you know, my vice officers are out this last weekend and bars that clearly know they're not supposed to sell after 2:00 AM are selling after 2:00 AM as my officers had purchased alcohol after 2:00 AM. So it, it becomes very difficult for us to, um, police. So that would not be a desirable effect if they ended alcohol sales prior to closure. It'd be our preference to have them both at the same time.
What type, and I know it's gonna vary depending on area of town, history of the establishment and so on, but for an establishment such as this one, how frequently would the police do a routine inspection?
It depends on the calls for service in the area.
So if you're not getting any complaints, if you're not seeing a bunch of people loitering in a parking lot, you're less inclined to pay much attention to it?
That's correct. That's correct. We, we, our officers tend to float where the problems are.
Are there, go, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Please continue.
We spend a lot of time around bars, uh, around 2:00 in the morning. Uh, bars, dancing, uh, drinking, any sort of, uh, entertainment, uh, you know, they all have their common effect and, uh, that usually results in fights or, you know, people drunk, uh, people driving under the influence and that sort of thing. So we do have quite a bit of spiked activity around the closure of bars. And in fact, we adjusted our patrol service times to have the greater concentration of officers during those nighttime hours when bars are closing. Um, obviously one of the classic ones, uh, was, um, 2612 Honolulu, if I've got my numbers correct.
The mix?
The mix.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's just, uh, quite a difficult, uh, issue for the police department to deal with and ironically, as Ms. Hammond, uh, sort of alluded to, um, the folks responsible for that facility live nowhere near or had no, uh, really interest in the residents. Obviously that were tremendously impacted by that facility.
Would it, would it potentially be a situation where some, some establishments aren't visited in an entire year because they're, they're quiet, you know, for, for lack of a better phrase, apparently peaceful?
Probably.
Okay.
I think that's a fair assessment. If, if they issue a one-year, if you issue a one-year CUP, um, you might not get one look at all, assuming there's no issues. Um, that, that facility is gonna be interesting and difficult because of the parking structures, because of the, uh, lighting in the areas after hours. It's, if we had our preference, alcohol would be up in the art and entertainment district, it'd be in central business district, but, uh, we can't tell owners and operators where to lease property, obviously.
What, um, I forgot what I was, forgot what I was gonna ask.
Well, you'll see your time too, Mr. Sheets.
Glad to have you here. Uh, let me, let me read some comments from this, uh, this issue and see what, I wanna get your thoughts on, on what you would wanna do or what you think would be appropriate. But in, in the conditions and the information about this issue, it talks about the billiard establishment is located in the census tract. establishment is located in a census tract where there are more on-sale establishments than would otherwise be allowed. Additionally, based on Part I crime statistics for this census tract, there are 224 crimes, 141% above the citywide average. While Billiards Corner is located in a census tract that exceeds the number of on-sale establishments as recommended by the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control and has more crime than any other areas of the city, this tract contains portions of the heavily commercial space and so on. So knowing that, what would be your, what would be your input in an area that has that, those kind of crime statistics and potential for problems? And allowing, and allowing the sale, I got a sense from Lieutenant Fox's input in the documentation that the fact, these facts and the fact that now we were going to allow another establishment to sell beer and wine was of concern. So I'm wondering what your thoughts are, just general input.
It is of concern. You know, I understand businesses and this is economic time, you know, we need to, obviously business owners need to make money any way they can within legal means, but generally with alcohol sales, I think we could probably draw a close correlation to increased criminal activity. You know, whether they intend to or not, occasionally people drink too much or their inhibitions are removed and where they wouldn't get in an argument or fight, they might. The majority of the calls for service in the police department happens in the southern end of town. It's just the way Glendale is and the way we're laid out. Overall, crime is decreasing. I think our, I think our numbers for these last few months are down, Part I and Part II crimes, if memory serves correctly. I couldn't allude to the fact that it would be the closure of this one particular business I'd like to brag on the police department, you know, and the good, the good job that we're all doing. But it is of concern if we're going to have another alcohol-selling establishment, another on-sale selling establishment. And as far as the over-concentration is recommended by ABC, as you know, we have a number of areas in town that are overly concentrated. Does that ultimately guide our decision? No. You know, it depends on the business model, it depends on the location, it depends on the hours. If we're going to have another nightclub in that particular facility, I'd be pulling my hair out, you know, obviously. It'd be of greater concern than a billiard hall with, I believe it's five tables or however many tables are in there. So it's of concern, but my imminent faith in the planning department and the commission to look out for the interest of the city and the police department, obviously the more bars we have, if you can classify it as that, the more calls we could very likely anticipate.
Okay, thank you.
Do you share something?
My dear, thank you very much.
I actually have a couple of things. Of course, part of it is, you know, if you have more, maybe you're just spreading out the trouble as opposed to concentrating. Compare other pool-slice billiard halls that do have either beer and wine and/or liquor, and what kind of systematic kind of problems have you seen there in terms of either hours of operations or control issues?
You know, honestly, just the one that I'm the most familiar with that's been around the longest is, would be Charles. I don't know that they've had that many troubles there. I do know that they have had problems there. Generally, patrons would get in a fight or...
And they're full liquor, yes.
I believe they are. I believe they are. Their operations close at 2:00 if I'm not mistaken. But over the period of time, I think, you know, they've run it well from my recollection and they have had troubles in there. We have had calls for service from the police department. That's the only one that comes to mind.
Guys with sticks, it's just, it can be a problem.
Could be. Sticks and beer in their stomachs.
Putting a hockey stick in the hands of an Irishman is not necessarily a good idea, much less a pool cue. All right. Anything else right now?
I have.
Please.
Two questions. It sounds like it's generally a recurring thing where alcohol is still being served after they're allowed to serve alcohol, so it seems like maybe the fines not as high. I mean, these businesses, I think, I presume are getting fined when you're talking about your cops going and getting the, buying alcohol. What's the fines we're talking about to these businesses?
It's up to ABC, so I couldn't tell you. ABC regulates, obviously, the license and license holder, and our officers, when they're served, they will cite the actual person serving the individual. So the Business and Professions Code, obviously, enforced, is enforced upon the seller, the person that actually committed the act, whereas the ABC codes, you know, is more specific to the license holder.
To the city, does it have?
So I couldn't tell you what the fine is. No, I couldn't tell you what the fine is for the license holder, but again, it's the operator. That's generally what it boils down to in all these businesses. We have some where we haven't had any issues and we've had others where we've had redundant recurrent problems at these various alcohol-serving establishments.
I'm just thinking, if there's a threat that their business will close down, if they don't do it, then they're not, they're not going to serve it anymore. You're not going to have this recurring problem. The fine is obviously not stringent enough.
Doesn't seem like it. Or ABC. ABC will suspend. I know we've had, we have had some that have been suspended.
Right.
They go through their period of suspension, open back up and continue on. And some of those, we've had, again, problems at after their suspension.
And my other point is, I'm not sure if you've actually seen the property or not, but one of the things I'm concerned about it is it's kind, the billiard place is kind of tucked away in the corner of this big shopping center, fairly good-sized shopping center, and it's, and it's in this like courtyard area. You can't see it from the street and it's not easy to patrol it and you're, obviously have challenges patrolling all over the city. How do you guys feel about that and what's generally, having this billiard place in tight place? And I know one of the conditions is that they're not going to allow congregation happening in that little courtyard space, which I don't, you know, how that's going to be possible, people trying to go out and smoke or whatever. It just seems like it's asking for something to happen in there late at night.
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's obviously incumbent on our officers if there's problems or just generally patrolling this place to drive through, get out of their car, walk around. That's something we'd encourage anyway. I trust that they'll do that. I trust that there actually would be no problems, that the business owner would manage his business, and if he sees a troublesome customer, that he'd call the police, because we would encourage these business owners, you know, if they see something brewing, to call us rather than try to conceal it and push it out into the neighborhood. So I would put ownness on the business owner, be my preference, but it is going to be a challenge, that's correct.
Anything for the police at this time? Anything further for staff or from staff at this moment?
Actually, I would just like to point out, Condition 5 and 6 were put in partially to address the courtyard visibility, parking lot issue. Condition 5 is the security guard shall be employed by the business from 7:00 p.m. to one half hour after closing of the business each day the business is open. And then Condition 6 is the operator of the business shall prohibit customers of the business from congregating in the courtyard adjacent to the business or the parking lot of the subject site.
I'm sorry, once again, anything for a representative from the police? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then anything further from staff? Go ahead, Ms. Landerga.
Mr. Kiesel, one thing, typically in elements where we have a large parking lot, we require adequate lighting. That doesn't seem to be part of the conditions here, is that an oversight or is that because, so it doesn't say anything about sufficient lighting?
That is a good observation. I can double-check the conditions, but, you know...
You may, and I have been known to admit things, but I thought I looked at it twice and I...
I'm sure you're right.
Did not see anything in there requiring that the parking lots be adequately lit and maintained, that lighting maintained as part of the condition.
Back to anything they said, to eliminate disturbing light.
Yes.
Right, that was a condition.
But it doesn't look like the lighting in the parking lot shines on any residents at all from my trolling the neighborhood.
I haven't been here in the evening, so I have no idea what the lighting level was.
You're correct. I don't, I don't see any condition that I placed on the, on the CUP regarding adequate lighting of the parking lot.
Anything else at this moment?
At this moment.
All right, in that case, rebuttal time from the appellate. Now you have another, up to 15 minutes to rebut or comment on questions that you've heard.
I'll just make a couple of points and then David will answer your question about the parking lot and also the lighting regarding the existing conditions. First of all, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation in your, the quality of your review. It's appreciated. Just one point regarding the sign and the signage and the whole question of the planning staff person going out and not finding the sign. The sign actually was put in, in time and actually fell down or disappeared and had to be put up again. And it just happened to be down when the staff person passed by the site. You have to take, trust my, my comment on that. That is what happened. Two, I'm glad you asked the question about the distinction between, the question for Officer Davy, the question about trouble around bars that close at 2:00 versus trouble around billiards establishments. And the one billiards establishment that was brought up was one that serves all manner of alcohol until 2:00. And then the only other point I have, maybe that's the third one. The only other point I have is obviously it's up to you to make a distinction between one group of young people and another, and perhaps you need to have some strong idea of the character involved in your appellant's. Because I appreciate concern for the city and for establishments that cause trouble, but certainly at least it's my experience of working with David and his father and the others concerned with his business, you couldn't really ask for a stronger group of people to be involved in trying to make a business work recreationally, basically, for young people. Appreciate it, thanks.
I'm not, I'm not, okay, are you going to speak as well? Okay, fine.
Okay, I want to speak about the gates. Okay, the gates for town parking are closed with the key. Nobody can access there except employees over in the plaza.
So the lower-level parking is employee-only?
The car gate is opens automatically when you come in from outside. So basically, it locks with the keys and every time I'm checking there with the key, the, are they working or not, so nobody gets in. And the underground parking is for employees only. Basically, no one can get in without having a key or control.
So your testimony is if it's a patron in a car, they're going to have to park on the surface street?
Yes.
Or the surface park?
Yes, yeah. Customers goes upstairs, employees goes downstairs, that's the whole thing. The second of all about the police officer he talks, he's saying that the observation is kind of hard there. I talked last time in the hearing too, I say, I'm not, I'm positive if the police officer can come in and get in, they can sit there, they can have a coffee, they can observe from inside too. I never have a problem with it. They can come in, they can observe from the window. And the second thing is, in the corner we have, we're going to have a security there. Who's control, who's going to control in that part and the parking part two? So they came in, they went to the car, so security going to take a look. Does they left or they having some talk there or something like that? And the lighting in the parking, we have a light, it's not dark after any time, it's always light until morning. Projections there, the plaza has it. It's light whenever it's dark there. So when you come in, it's a big projection from second floor, goes to floor, and it's a small lights all over the plaza. Nothing is dark there, so everything is viewed, everything is, you can be controlled from the plaza too if they want to see from the plaza. So everything is light there, so nothing is dark. And about the woman that spoke about underage, about his grandson, we don't have never problem with anybody, I didn't have anybody over there under 18 years if he is not with his guardians or a parent. Because of my, I don't know, she's saying people are drinking, driving, so it's mean we'll take out the alcohol from Glendale, nobody has the alcohol, nobody drink, nobody have anything. Seems to me like that, but it's a business, I'm doing my business in this part. She's doing her business or she working somewhere else. So what's the thing is, basically it's from the management, how to control it, not have underage people get drink over there. And the law is under 18 years old can get in with the guardians. And somebody wants beer there, we're going to ask an ID. If he wants two beer and he's with underage, somebody is underage and he's 21, we're going to give him one beer, we're not going to give him two beer. For be safe our size, so this one not going to have the beer and we're going to control that. Because two employees is going to be over there and 2,000 square feet, I don't think so, is too big to not control it for four eyes. And the two eyes outside for security can be controlled by any of them to see if somebody is drinking without ID or something. And the second thing is, I answered your question about the ABC department, what kind of fines they have. First time for the liquor store, if it's not serving place, they give that $1,000 ticket. For the serving place, it's around 2,000 something and you go court, you get Mr. Minor ticket. And the second time they suspending you for six months. And I got all my ABC paperwork done. I had the 30 days ABC poster on my window posted and we sent, the ABC department required to send all the properties there to let them know we're going to have a beer. And all the time we passed, we didn't have any protestants. We didn't have any protestants. I talked with the ABC department investigator who was doing my job, who took my papers. She told me, you're fine, you just have a hold from the Glendale of City because of the appeal. When you're done with it, you have two to five days to finish up with that paperwork and we can issue the paperwork. We had the, we went to the fingerprints, everything. we went to the fingerprints, everything, everything was clear. Just worrying, what I want to do, my business grows up. That's it. I don't want to mess up with my business. Because as you know, you can give me one year conditional use permit for beer, to test me how it gonna works. If I work bad, if I have some calls there, if I have some complaints there, next year, same day, I'm not gonna get anything from you. You're just gonna tell me, you know what, David, you get this, 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 this. We're not allowed to give you anymore. So I understand all that stuff, and that why I don't have any problem until now. And I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna have any problems later on too. Because I'm, I know how to manage my business. And about the police, I says, if there is a problem, I feel myself going to call them, or security gonna call them if I don't see that. So all the control going to be under the control there, everything.
Questions for the speaker?
Just one quick question. You're, you have five tables?
Yes.
Do you have room to expand and add more tables?
Yes. One more table.
Get a sense, I wasn't inside of itself. Okay.
Yeah, one more table I can expand, but I, five is enough now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't I read something in the conditions that was limited to five?
Minimum five.
Oh, minimum.
Minimum five.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker, for the appellant? Any closing comments from staff?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Absent questions, I'll close the public hearing, we'll enter into deliberations. And I would just ask, as you share your opinions, you might just start off by whether or not you're pro con on the beer wine period, and then talk beyond that in terms of conditions, hours, and so on. Who'd like to go first? I'm thinking of a number, no.
Why not? You said you did.
You thought I said that?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
I mean, I'm still borderline beer wine or not. One of the things I'm concerned about is that the report talks about how this area has such a high crime rate compared to the rest of the city, and how, I guess, and we have a cop who talked about, or Lieutenant Fox who talked about that some of the crime potentially came from one business that's closed down, and that we didn't, we don't have, we still don't have enough information from that. And I know, like the officer mentioned today, that if he had known about it, he could have got more of the stats, he could get it tomorrow. I would generally feel uncomfortable making, you know, this decision without having more of that information, especially because the report talks about how there's so much more crime in this area. On the other hand, I want to be supportive of this business. I know from, I guess, hearing from the officer speaking today, and officers' comments from last time, that generally it's acceptable, you know, even though this is, seems like a unique location, this business, and where it's tucked away, generally they're okay with it. I know the business owner wants to do good, it's not, he's not gonna, I mean, he doesn't want crimes happen. I would generally, I think, be supportive of some type of alcohol license. And I wouldn't want to limit it, probably, you know, have a 10 o'clock line, or, or limit the time unique to this business, and have other businesses have, you know, open till the normal times that they do. And especially because the officer mentioned that, how most of their peak hours of officers are around when all the other bars and billiard places close. And this just falls short of that time. So I think I would be supportive of that, but I just generally feel uncomfortable making that decision without the information of that crime stuff. That's what concerns me. And I'm concerned for the business, I'm concerned for all the businesses around there. And the other thing I'm concerned about is that the neighbors were just not notified. It was just property owners, and I know there's a lot of new type of housing around there. When I drove by today, and I'm just concerned that they don't know about this, and it would have been nice to hear from them, get their thoughts too, and to get their input. So if I did support this, it would be for a limited time, see how it would work, and then, and then see if anything came up, and then we would revisit the issue again.
Thank you. Next.
Okay. As usual, none of these are easy. I'll start out regarding the beer and wine, so that we can get that clear, as far as I'm concerned. In reading the documentation, I'm aware personally, just on other activities involved in the city, that this is the lowest census tract in our community. At least the area directly around Edison and Pacific Park, but this is relatively close to that, which I think is important, I think it's significant. And just by reading the statistics, and I won't bore everybody with rereading them, but just the issue around 224 crimes, 141% above the citywide average, means something to me. I think that's significant. And I don't think one business would have impacted those numbers enough to make me change my mind, speaking about the other business that may have caused crime in that area. This is no reflection on the individual's business. He sounds like a very good businessman, he sounds like he manages it well, he's very concerned. My, coming from a broader point, I think it's wrong to add additional alcohol serving places in an area that already is in trouble. And the only way we fix that is to not add more locations that serve alcohol. So that's, that would be my concern about that one. On the other hand, when I look at what's happened to, to the appellant relative to the hours of, of operation and hours of serving, I'm still confused. I think, I think there was a disservice done for the appellant, and this may be because I just didn't understand all the numbers, but relative to adding the alcohol serving, the hours of business that existed, and then the hours of business that he ended up with, he went, I think he went backwards. And that, obviously he didn't want that, that's why he's here tonight. But in coming here tonight, now everything's on the table again, and I'm giving you my two cents about the whole issue. So my first take would be, I would not approve the sale of beer and wine. If that happens, then my thought would be, let him have the hours that he had before, just make them consistent. Serve the alcohol, same hours that he's open. So I don't want to put the man out of business, I don't, I don't, I think we, my concern was, we took hours away, which obviously has made his running the establishment more difficult. It's more difficult to make the money to support and afford all of the conditions we've given him. So that's where I stand.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Sheets very succinctly covered some of the issues I had. I think that it was kind of startling to me to see that the hours were reduced, and I don't know, I don't know how you could add three more people and reduce the hours and make it a viable business. That seems to me to be a difficult thing to substantiate. I do have concerns about adding further to an already impacted area, although I know it has been done and it can be done successfully. And the dilemma for me is that there was an approval, it had, you know, limited hours, there's an expectation. I think some of the conditions are realistic, and I think there are a couple of conditions that should have been added. So I, I'm sort of in a pickle. I would have gone with a one year, and, and, you know, I actually would be fine with keeping the other hours, or even at least making it one to 12, and then having it a one year, and adding, making sure that there's a lighting condition in there that would make sure that lighting is maintained at the current standard, so that, it is hard for me to say, yes, I think another alcohol establishment can be put in there, but it, I think to be competitive, he needs to come forward with a proposal, and he stated his case, and he successfully did it with Mr. Kiesel, and I think something would arise. So to me, if that, and we did not hear the other officer, we just have hearsay, which makes it very difficult to make the decision based upon that information. But I would be open to suggestions from my colleagues as to what to do here. It could go either way.
Okay. Yeah, and that's why we call it, you know, deliberations. We all kind of talk through our, through our various ideas. For me, you know, the starting off point is things like, you know, what are the statistics, what's happening in that general area? But that's a starting off point, because statistics can be skewed depending on what the, the character is. You know, is it heavy commercial, is it, you know, is it quote unquote, you know, an entertainment-driven area? There's all sorts of things that can affect the statistics. But it's, it's a starting point. So you take that and you go, okay, what are they gonna come in here with? If it had been for this specific area, you know, a nightclub, or a true bar, or something like that, certainly I would have been even more apprehensive. I look at a business that's been in operation for two years, admittedly not serving, not serving beer or wine, but has been in business for two years, so far there haven't been complaints about anything that's been going on. You know, it is a, I would not say this would be an intense use. Clearly, people will be drinking beer and wine, it's part of shooting pool. But I also don't see it as being a rollicking, frolicking sports bar, you know, let's go, let's go here to get hammered type of thing. So I don't, I don't consider a beer and wine license for this establishment to be a really intensification of use. So if, when I go from the statistics and I look at the specifics, I'm, I'm comfortable with what's going on, especially when law enforcement, while they're not coming in going, oh, you betcha, aren't, aren't dramatically opposed at this point. The other thing that's striking me is that frankly, the appellant and his representative, but especially the appellant, and, you know, we can all be fooled by what people say and how they say it, but I, I'm struck by, he seems to be very sincere. He said to me the right things. He's talked about, you know, what is their approach when somebody comes up to order two beers? Well, if you're with mine, you're getting one beer, those type of things. So, so there's an, I think, an awareness that, that they have an opportunity that they shouldn't screw up. I, the two-year duration struck me as reasonable when I think about, in previous cases where we've had to wait for the ABC to do their thing and so on. By testimony, the appellant is saying he's basically there. So, and he's also indicated, and he may regret it in the future, but he's also indicated that a one-year duration would be something he would, you know, that he could live with. I think that, based on, again, the other testimony in terms of hours of operations, and trying to cut off beer sales early, you know, you can try it, but how do you enforce it? It resonated with me, something that, that was said about how the police are kind of ramping up their forces so that all the places that close at the same time have adequate manpower, that, that kind of resonated. I guess where I'm going with it is, I would favor the granting of the beer and wine, again, because of this specific property, this specific use. Frankly, even though ownership can change what the owner is telling us, so, you know, for the owner, at least for the time being. And I would grant it for the hours that they're requesting, which is, you know, a couple hours longer than what staff had granted, but I would limit it to one year. You know, it's a short timeframe. If there are problems, we're gonna know about it very, very quickly. And I operate under the premise that, you know, one foul ball and you're out of the ballgame. You don't get the three strikes and you're out. It's one foul. If you've shown that you're a detriment to the neighborhood, you're gonna lose all your privileges. So that's kind of the way I'm weighing in.
Now, just building on, on that, if, if someone does bring up a big case, you know, the homeowners talk about how this is causing a lot of noise, people are drunk on the street, I mean, does that, can that come back up, even if it hasn't been a year yet?
Violation.
Well, it's, the police department can, you know, look at what's going on at the business if they receive complaints. Neighborhood Services gets complaints and investigates complaints, and if it's become a nuisance, we can, we can act on that before the one year.
Would it be a violation of the condition number 14?
That all, that all music, lighting, noise, odors shall be confined to the occupancy?
So it's not to disturb occupants of other businesses or properties?
I mean, it could be, yeah. Depending on, on what was going on, on the site. I think there's also just a, like a general nuisance section in the code that could apply.
I also want to add, by the way, the, the two employees plus the security guard, that's, that's pretty significant staffing for a, you know, a five or six table billiards parlor, again, in my, to my perspective. Other thoughts?
I would like to have the lighting condition put in there, that
That's a good one.
The parking lot would be maintained at the, and we have one in the other conditional, the other findings and, and conditions. If I can find it, I'll read that into it.
I'm sorry, a condition on lighting?
The parking lot.
Okay.
Maintain.
I think you earlier phrased it as the parking lot shall be adequately lit and maintained.
Right.
Add that as a condition?
Mm-hmm. At all times, during business hours, whatever, who cares in the daytime.
Okay, so if we, if we modify, one of the modifications was to add that lighting condition. The other potential, if we're gonna modify, would be to extend the hours of operation and change the approval to one year. Comments on the one year?
I would be in support of that.
I would also, if I may, after, here from Mr. Sheets.
Now, what do you think about one-year duration, hours of operation, the suggested light condition? Or are you still against the entire?
No, I'm, I'm, I have a little confusion that one years are long enough. I guess that's kind of, I feel, I would probably be in supportive if that's what the majority of the commission wanted to do, but I could go one year or two year if I was gonna vote for this.
Now, what were you, what would you like to say, Ms. Land?
I would like to maybe suggest that we put a condition on here that the lower parking lot is not used for patrons.
Just, just on the suspicion that there might be a change of current use?
Well, there might be a change of owner too, some of those things.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And to me, that seems
Sure.
Part of the security issue.
That's, that's a great what-if type of thing, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? Any other suggestions? Would somebody like to make a motion? Ms. Landerga?
Moved by myself, Ms. Landerga, that upon Moved by myself, Ms. Landerga, that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to conditional use permit case number PCUP-2010-001, located at 730 South Central Avenue, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the Planning Commission hereby sustains the then-planning hearing officer's decision with additional conditions as stated.
Well, I think we would modify because of hours of operation.
Oh, okay. Modifies. And approves said conditional use permit case number PCUP-2010-001 to allow sale service and onsite consumption of beer and wine at an existing billiards hall located at the same address as mentioned in the CG Commercial General Zone, described as portion of Lot 1, tract number 4378, portion of Lot 5, Birmingham tract, portion of Lot 51, tract number 39, in the city of Glendale, County of Los Angeles, in accord with the findings and conditions set forth in today's discussion and the decision letter of July 2, 2010.
With, and then state those added conditions, please.
With the condition that, condition number four, will reflect the hours of Sunday, Wednesday, 1 to 12:00 p.m. and Thursday through Sunday, 1 to 1:00 p.m.
1 to 12:00 a.m., right.
No, no, hold on, hold on. One at a time. Sunday through Wednesday, 1:00 p.m.
To 12:00 p.m.? That's what they were asking for?
12:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You just had them open 23 hours.
And Thursday through Saturday, 1:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Well, the request had been 2:00 a.m., which...
No, it is 1:00.
No, it is 1:00 a.m. Thank you for clarifying. Great.
The original hours were, but that's not the request.
No, no, thank you. I stand corrected.
That, condition number 23, be changed from a period of two years to one year. A new condition, number 25, shall require that all lighting be in the parking lot be adequate and maintained. And a condition, number 26, that the subterranean parking lot will be used only for employees and not for patrons.
I have a motion seeking support.
I'll second it.
Motion support. Call roll, please.
Aye.
No.
Yeah.
Aye. On a vote of three to one, conditional use permit case PCUP-2010-001 has been approved with modifications. Under the provisions of Chapter 2.88 of the Glendale Municipal Code, any person affected by the decision of the commission has the right to appeal said determination to the City Council. If it is believed the decision is an error or that procedural errors have occurred or as if there's substantial new evidence which could not have reasonably been presented at the hearing, any appeal must be filed within 15 days following the actual date of such action. Information regarding appeals and appeal forms will be provided upon request and must be filed in Building and Safety Division 633 East Broadway, Room 101, together with the required filing fee for such an appeal. The Building and Safety Division telephone number is 818-548-3200. Would anyone like a brief recess before the next case?
Thank you.
We will be in recess for just a few minutes.
But will soon give us a brief update. While we're waiting for him, I just want to clarify, at this point, I only have one card for the applicant of the property to speak. If there are anyone else that's an owner of the property, an applicant or an interested party, they're entitled to speak with you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we left.
What would the names be? I'm sorry?
Part time.
You wrote down "other," so you're part of the application?
Are people who are speaking, your in support or not?
It's okay, I want to clarify while we're waiting. Process-wise, the applicant or the appellant gets 15 minutes. If there are owners of the property, for example, they're part of your presentation. If there's a bartender, if there's a neighbor, if there's somebody else that's not that direct, then they get their three minutes during public comment. That's all I'm clarifying. Right now, I just have one card for your 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, staff over you, please.
Okay, real quick. Project located at 1018 East Colorado. It's at the corner of Adams Street and Colorado, the southwest corner. Look in our location map, as well as our zoning map, you can see that it is west of here. Here's Adams. Now, part of the project that is of interest is that this is a residential zone, and that building comes all the way back to where this line is right here. You can see how it comes back here, and this line would be this one here. The parking lot, a portion of it's in there as well. This condition has existed since 1924 as commercial uses. It was a movie theater, first constructed as that front part or store above that, because it's two levels at the front. If you look in the photographs that we have, that were photographed here, you'll get those photographs that show the two-story element in the front. At one time, years and years ago, it was apartments, but now they're offices, so it's all commercial right now, but it's in this location. The 35 parking spaces have been in existence as required use since the 1981 approval for a nightclub and restaurant use, which has been around for, since 1981. So there's been 29 years of an assembly restaurant-type use on this site. And it continues up to this day. The latest approval has an expiration date of 2013. That's all in your staff report. So this again just gives you an overview of the site, this being the north by Colorado. Here's Adams. You can see the floor plan. One of the things that I was working with one of the interested parties is what's the square footage of the property, of the tenant spaces? The entire square footage is 14,705 square feet. Now, for purpose of parking, it's based on the viewing area, which is 6,009 square feet. Now, parking from a zoning code technical point of view is not changing here. The assembly type use for a nightclub is the same as what it is today for this discussion of modifying the nightclub and adding the banquet hall, because the two are the same or very compatible type of land uses, or comparable types of land uses, as we noted in our staff report. And I tried to show in this chronology, which is a very long project history, go, wow. The reason is because there's been a long, continuous history of this project. Not all of it good. Police, Neighborhood Services, the neighbors can tell you the case, but in the last several years, since about 2006, there's been a change under the current ownership. You can see how the site has been improved, renovated, and the operation has greatly improved. Now, the comments from the other departments, so it's really three of them, that had comments that are applicable to land use in this case. One is Neighborhood Services, they have an existing code enforcement case on this property, and that is because it's approved as a restaurant slash nightclub, but they were using it as a banquet hall. That's the code enforcement case that put the statement against the applicant, and so the applicant is coming in to try to correct this condition. Neighborhood Services has some recommended conditions, which we've tried to incorporate those into the staff report and conditions of approval. The police department also had comments, and they have noted that there were three recorded disturbances, but it's interesting that the disturbances, one in which an incident, there was no report taken, another was a false alarm, and the final one was a disturbance that occurred nearby after the guest left. This project is also under a Type 47 liquor license for ABC, and there's no current or past disciplinary history on it. Police Department also recommended numerous conditions, and we need to incorporate those into the staff report. The last city department that has comments is the City Traffic Engineering Department. Their primary concern was the increased days and hours of operation. Currently, a restaurant use can be used days and weekends. The nightclub use, though, is restricted at this point from Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The applicant is asking to increase that, and if you look at conditions, I believe it's eight, nine, and 10 of the staff report, you can see what the, nine, 10, and 11 of the staff report, you'll see what the hours and days of operation it's proposing, which increases to seven days a week for nightclub and for banquet hall. The nightclub hours, though, have been reduced because it has a very similar characteristics as a restaurant. What is the difference? The big difference is that they're adding 200 square feet of floor area for dancing. As soon as you hit that threshold, a restaurant is a nightclub in our definitions for the city of Glendale. Banquet hall is for private functions in which people are invited, whereas a nightclub use is where people are, pay a ticket or a cover charge or something, but we've also noted that in condition number eight, I tried to put some clarification in that issue. I think I pretty much gave you sort of an idea of the project sites, so I'll come down here. Now, the is for discretion. I turned it on, I turned it on, sorry. Are heard by different bodies.
They are, yes.
Yes, they are. The planning hearing officer heard the case this morning, and so I made a similar presentation this morning on this very topic of allowing a request for a banquet hall in the commercial zone, just in the front part of that property. Now, a nightclub is not allowed in a banquet hall either, or they're not allowed in a residential zone. And a nightclub is technically not allowed in the commercial zone. So nightclub is not allowed in either zone. Banquet hall can be allowed in the commercial zone with a conditional use permit approval. So we've had to split these two things up. And of course, alcohol beverage sales will be a part of these applications. Now, currently, though, and for 29 years, there's been a nightclub on this site, so there's been a long history of nightclub use, which is trying to add the banquet hall service to it now. When we went through our analysis of the project, we tried to show that through the findings, for instance hardships, practical difficulties, exceptional circumstances, that what makes this property a little bit different than a lot of properties is that since 1924, there has been a commercial use, and a good bit of that use has been an assembly type use. It's a theater type use, so it hasn't been, let's say, a nightclub. But then later on, in 1975, you'll find that there was restaurant beer and wine sales, and then in 81, it became a nightclub and a restaurant, and it's continued. So here you have this long history of use by this property for commercial activities in this neighborhood. So we felt that the request to, in a sense, continue the nightclub use and to allow a banquet hall use, which is very compatible land use, would be, would be recommended for an approval or by the planning department, because we felt that it could be justified and defended by the findings. We also don't feel that the proposed banquet hall use itself would be materially detrimental to public welfare in this neighborhood. Again, there's a long history of a nightclub use here, which is a very similar, compatible use, and these two uses go, are very similar. And then we felt that it was consistent with the different land use elements, the land use element, noise element, circulation element, that in our general plan. That pretty much wraps up just a very brief presentation, because I know it's getting late this evening and I kind of running through it, but I can answer questions, go through that with you.
Ms. Landerga?
Mr. Baxter, sorry. I told you I would let you know I've had some questions that you might need some background information for. But what is the maximum occupancy of this assemblage?
784.
784?
784. I just looked.
I believe it's up on, it should be up on your.
I anticipated the question.
On your cover sheet.
Okay, and what is the code requirement for parking 784 people?
It doesn't go by that, unfortunately, not for parking. Parking is based on floor area, and the way it specifically states in the code is based on floor area that is viewable to the assembly area. So it's not based on the occupancy law.
However, though, if you are a planner and you're making determinations that take all of these great things into a plan.
Yes.
One would hope that you would ask the question, how do you park 784 folks in a 35-car parking lot?
And that's a fair question, and what I've been trying to emphasize is the same uses there now, the same type of use.
Doesn't make it a good use.
That's correct, sir, but it is one that has been there and has worked and has improved in the last several years. And so the banquet hall use is a very comparable use to the nightclub use.
Well, I don't know if I get that. That, to me, does not seem to be, you know, like to like. I mean, a nightclub has people coming and going. Banquet has a set number of folks who arrive at the same time.
And leave, basically.
At the same time. So it actually, to me, doesn't seem like the same kind of use. One seems far more intensive than the other, and so I don't know if you could maybe try to clarify how come planning assumes these are same land uses, is it not, is use not considered in the land use?
Yes, when, for us, we were looking at this parking issue, and we had great debates over it ourselves. Both of them are considered assembly uses, whether it be a church, or a movie theater, or a dinner theater, they're assembly type uses. So is one retail use more intensive than another retail use? Now, you're going to find a range within the category of land use. So here we have a land use, and you have a range in these. One of the things we looked at, for instance, in a banquet facility is, is it's probably less intense than a nightclub in some respects, in that, yes, maybe everyone shows up at one time, but you usually have a different type of, of commercial use going on. For instance, weddings, or some other occasion in which you may have a whole range of ages there, from babies to grandparents, whereas a nightclub, you tend to have a younger crowd that may show up for a different type of activity, you know, lots of, you know, a little bit more broad.
Old folks don't go to nightclubs?
I don't know.
Sorry.
I don't.
Had a younger crowd, I thought that was ageist, quite frankly.
Right. No, it's not ageist. Actually, I mean, the reality is, is a banquet facility, as we've talked and based on our experience, tends to have a broader clientele or patrons, broader range of ages. Not every case, but it's different. So we're still looking at, it's an assembly land use, it's an assembly parking use, and so, again, within that broad range of continuum of land uses, of assembly uses, maybe one is, you know, maybe that's what we're looking at, but it still falls within that category. So we have to give it some number for parking, and we have to give it some number for the occupancy, and they fall under those same categories.
Well, just one more question, and it's in the same vein, is the code enforcement somehow figured out this was a banquet hall and not a nightclub.
Correct.
So there obviously is some difference. What was their reasoning when they came up with this determination?
Complaints. There was people, there were interested parties that raised the point that this is not operating as a restaurant or a nightclub.
And what were those complaints? I mean, I know that we're rectifying that through this process here, but what were the complaints?
Well, for instance, in a restaurant.
Well, what were the complaints?
They did not itemize a complaint, but the category is this, if I may. In a restaurant, you can't use more than 30 percent. I believe in a nightclub, you can't use more than 30 percent of your floor area for private parties, and that's what we have, is private parties and excessive. So if you have a private party in which you are an invited guest and nobody else can come, that's a problem, if you use more than 35, 30 percent of your occupancy for that, or floor area for that. So that is the basis of it. I don't have the individual itemized issue, but that's, that's the basis.
The reason I ask is because if it was the parking that sort of incited that thought pattern, that would be very helpful for us to know.
Well, that's a good point, and I think one we, later on, you'll find, from the, at least stated as this morning, from the police and Neighborhood Services, that is not the issue that's driving things. Neither's noise or smoking. I believe Neighborhood Services staff mentioned this morning at the conditional use permit hearing that in 2004 was their last formal complaint. So that was sort of where we're coming from on this, anyway.
I'm through with questions.
I'd like to.
Can I just add to Chris's last answer? Your question about the parking, we did discuss this a lot internally, as Chris indicated, and not only did, as Chris mentioned, Neighborhood Service and Police indicate that their experience with that parking, overflow of parking into the neighborhood was not a major issue. I wouldn't say it's nonexistent, but they didn't find it a major issue. We did have extensive conversations with Traffic and Transportation Division, and they pointed out the availability of on-street parking in Colorado after 6:00 PM. They pointed out that banquet halls, because of the type of customers, might have a higher number of people coming in each vehicle, which was, you know, one factor that would kind of mitigate to some extent the parking issue. And also, the fact that this place has been operating as a banquet hall for a number of years just gave them a base of experience. Gave city staff a base of experience on which to judge.
So I guess that my question was going to be, the complaints occurred while it was being used as a nightclub, but you're telling me now it's been used for a couple of years as a banquet hall illegally?
I mean, we do, we have tried to get places which have more, from restaurants to banquet halls, to come in and apply as banquet halls, to regularize their operations, and.
Regularize?
Well, to come into focus, to get the proper permits for what they're actually doing, let me put it that way. And this, you know, it was an applicant who did come in.
Let me ask Mr. Garcia, what's the difference between regularize and legalize?
Please don't make too much of that.
Yeah, it was.
So, okay, I need to go there. Thank you.
Anything else introductory-wise to ask staff? All right, we'll let the applicant come forward for their presentation. Mr. Seymour, you have up to 15 minutes, and there will be a rebuttal period later as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jeff Seymour. I'm with Seymour Consulting Group. Our address is 2815 Townsgate Road in Westlake Village, and I'm acting as applicant at, for this case tonight, for Palladio. Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, to again describe what we're asking for, it's an application for a use variance to modify the existing nightclub and operate a new banquet hall use with alcoholic beverage sales service and consumption in the C3 commercial service zone and the R2250 residential zone. I wanted just to give a bit of clarity in regard to the property itself, and Commissioner, I am so glad you brought up parking, because I'm going to discuss a lot of that tonight. In relation to the subject site, as Mr. Baxter had mentioned, this has been in commercial use since 1924, beginning as a theater, then becoming a bowling alley, then becoming a nightclub, then becoming a restaurant, and since 1981, a restaurant nightclub. The property rests primarily in the C3 zone, although about a third, as Mr. Baxter had mentioned, of the property is in the R2250 medium residential zone. The variance that we're discussing tonight has been in use, it was first applied for in 1975. We have noted with the staff and the staff, and we have been working diligently to move forward with this, with this project and to come before you tonight. The report, as is mentioned in the staff report, is that we do, in fact, have an existing nightclub, restaurant use, sharing the same floor area, parking requirements as requested for this banquet hall and nightclub use. We have reviewed all of the conditions, the 40 conditions that have been placed in the draft conditions of approval, and we have agreed with all of them, and that includes the issues with noise, lighting, security, parking. And I thought I'd begin with that, because we are very well aware that there are concerns in regard to parking, and in fact, we do indeed have 35 required parking spaces. In relation to a valet, because all of the parking that's done at Palladio is done by valet, we can take the 35 parking spaces, and we can increase those to about seven, from 70 to 80 spaces. So that's one side of this. There is in addition to that, a off-site parking facility that's fully leased, that's across the street, that includes an additional 100 parking spaces. And then next door to Palladio, not on the Adams side, but where the building actually is, there is an additional 50 parking spaces. So the fact of the matter is, is although we are required to have 35 parking spaces, we do indeed have a significantly greater number of parking spaces that we use during any number of periods of time that we are in, in service. And that's something, Commissioner, we really do need to let you know. We also let you, need to let you know that this valet, in all the years that we have been using them, has never parked on the street. We have never had any complaints from our neighbors. We are aware that there are, in fact, some concerns with regard to noticing and the like, and we understand that. But in addition to the understanding of the, of the notices, we also need to be aware that we have not had any, any complaints. Then in the five years that Mr. Koshigian has had, has owned this property, it has been improved, and you will hear a great deal about that tonight also. We can't work, we can't work in a vacuum. We are well aware that this property has been in commercial use since 1924, but without the, the ability to keep our neighbors happy and safe, our business doesn't work. So I wanted to bring that up. I know there's probably additional questions that you might have. We're here tonight to answer them. As I think I mentioned to you, Commissioner, I was going to try and be blessedly brief in my initial presentation, but I do want to let you know that we're here to answer any questions, and if I can't answer them, we'll have someone here to answer them.
All right, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Questions for the speaker?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have, I have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So let's start talking about some of these conditions.
Yes.
Condition, do you have a copy of it handy?
I do, actually.
Might as well, I'm not going to read it all out loud, so you might as well catch up to us here.
Please.
I'm on page three, item number eight.
Yes.
And I just want to clarify what they're saying. All events will be identified as either a nightclub event or a banquet hall, and never shall the twine meet.
Correct, and I should have said to you, Mr. Chairman, when I began, because it was part of my, my script here, that we are very well aware that we shall never, never have a banquet use and a nightclub use at the same time.
So that means if you're only using, and you have the ability to have, what, you have several spaces for banquet within the.
It's just basically, as is shown.
One large space.
One large space.
Okay, I wasn't sure from the floor plan whether there was like two spaces. All right, so it's not like you could have three banquets going on at one time?
No, we wouldn't.
It's sole, that's another thing. So conditionally, it would be one, one lease, one renter, if you will.
That's correct.
At a time, okay?
And I also, Mr. Chairman, I might also want to mention, the, the number, Commissioner, was 784 in aggregate, but the fact is, is that the fire department has restricted us down to 540 of the sit-down, and that really needs to be mentioned also in regard to, you know, we want to put everything under, you know, in the equation.
Okay, item number nine, days of, hours of operation for the nightclub, 11 to 12 AM.
Yes.
Friday through Saturday, but the banquet hall, you want to have the same starting time, but you want the banquet hall to go two hours later.
Yes.
Why, I guess, why would you want to shut down the nightclub so early? Let's try.
Well, it's an operational thing, but the, the other side of this, historically, and that's the only way that I can, I can provide you with some, some answers here, it doesn't go that long. The, the use of a banquet facility, you know, when you think of this, you're thinking that we're going to have 500 or 700 people. From what I had been told and have observed, it, we're. From what I had been told and have observed, we're usually talking 100, 150 people. So it, and I know I'm not answering your question with regard to the time, but part of the, the whole process of numbers and times is really the kind of event that we're having. So if it's a wedding, how, I guess the way it's done is it's, it's under contract and you are required to end at X, X time. That may be less than the legal time, but that is, what they were looking for is they were looking for some flexibility in the, in.
I, I just don't understand the logic between nightclub and banquet hall in different hours.
Well, I, you know, a nightclub can be, can be, can be used for, for a public, pretty much what's defined in Section 8, for a public use, whereas a banquet is a private.
Fair enough.
You know, a private use, bar mitzvah, or a, you know, a wedding or a birthday.
Bar mitzvah.
And I think, as I remember, yes. And I think, as I remember in, in Condition 8, Mr. Chairman, although I'm not looking at it at the moment, I, from what I remember, not only is it defined in Condition 8, but also the type of, of use is defined in Condition 8. So if it's a American Cancer Society event, that's different than it would be a wedding. And we, we are required, under, under the conditions here, to actually notice that. So, you know, people have the ability of, again, under Condition 8.
Let me run down to hours, or not hours, well, yeah, special, under, under, ugh, under number 11.
Yes, sir.
The special events and holidays. Defend, well, first off, let's just talk about Monday through Sunday. And the idea that on a Sunday, you want to be open to 2:00 in the morning. Just in general, that's under number 10, for example. Banquet hall use Sundays till 2:00 in the morning, Monday morning, 2:00 a.m.?
Well, have you, have you opened, I mean, you have events that go to 2:00 a.m. on Sundays?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, there are activities during the holidays that if you are going to a religious ceremony that end at 10:00 or something, and they could go afterwards. I, I don't think that's an unreasonable.
2:00 a.m. on a Sunday, all right? Well, I mean, I'm raising it.
You know, maybe we party differently.
Right. You know, I, telegraphing, I have actually great problems with any number of the holidays and special events and the idea that they can be open to 2:00 a.m. And I, and I base that on telegraphing on the idea of Sunday. You know, weekends, people's patterns are a little different. People are inclined to say, oh, it's, it's midnight on a Friday or Saturday, I can understand a little noise, okay? 2:00 a.m., on Christmas Day, for example, if it's a Thursday, if it's a Wednesday, there are people that work the next morning. And yet, by these events, you could be open to 2:00 a.m. on Christmas night.
Well, I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, except for the fact that for the past 29 years, the allowed time from Thursday to Sunday has been from 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Doesn't make it right.
But what I'm saying is, and, and, but it doesn't make it wrong either.
And that was supposedly a nightclub. You know, I guess maybe people aren't inclined to go out nightclubbing on Christmas.
Well, but.
Maybe that's, maybe that's what's happening.
And, and I, again, I'm not disagreeing with you, but we have not received any complaints. And the amount of time that we are requesting, I think is, you know, I, I can't speak for New Year's, I can't, for some of the, for some of the, the date, you know, I, it, we, we just haven't, we haven't received any kind of complaint in all the years that we've, we've been, we've been involved. So I, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, and I hope you want, you believe.
It's okay to be argumentative. This is, I'm, don't mince the words, it's fine. Number 13, just clarifying, and this is actually kind of a standard thing I've seen in other ones, there'll be times where you'll have seven security guards when you, when you've rented to a full banquet, based on your testimony of 540. Is that identified when they book, that there'll be quote-unquote approximately 300 people? How's that handled?
I'll make it easier for you. Forget this condition at this moment. Without conditions at this time, Palladio always will hire anywhere from four to eight security people. And that, it's the four to eight security people in the valets, and then the cameras that are, that are there to ensure that there's security throughout the facility. So the, the, that condition to us was actually rather mild, because we do it anyway.
Okay. Talk to me about the leased 100 spaces. What's the conditions of hours of use on those?
They're, they're, when, when they need overflow, they've got them.
Well, I mean, is this, I don't know the lot. So is this a lot that they have 24/7? Or is this a lot that they kind of get at 6:00 o'clock when some business closes?
From what I gather, it's after 6:00, it's, it's after 6:00, it's, and it's leased, and.
So they have, they have control of it in the evenings?
Correct.
In other words, okay. And I guess the only other question I have is, why have you been breaking the rules for several years? Why are you coming now asking for forgiveness instead of doing what you should have done to begin with?
Well, let me, let me, let me respond to that, because I think that is important. We did voluntarily come here. And there is not, I'm not going to say to you that we did not have a banquet facility here. But the fact of the matter is, is that the definition of banquet and restaurant and nightclub changed in, in the city in 2002. And although this was way before I came around, from what I gather, there had been discussions between the city and Palladio in regard to the legal not-conforming rights of a banquet facility. So for the last couple of years, we have been in conversation with, with the city. We voluntarily came here knowing full well that our, that our existing entitlement would be coming due in 2013. We did not do this with the idea that we were, we were trying to hide anything, and in fact, I'm trying to be very clear that we have not. But the fact of the matter is, is that the 30% rule had been something that the city and we had talked about for a number of months, and after some significant discussions, we had decided that we would voluntarily move forward with a conditional use permit.
The sunset on this is open. It's Condition 40, I believe. Authorization shall be valid for a period of blank years. Short of infinity, what would you suggest would be a reasonable time?
This is really up to you, Mr. Chairman. We, we, we really have, we never even discussed it with the city.
Okay. I'd like to hear from the city when they chat later on that. I'd also like to hear back from the city in terms of conversations leading up to this hearing, as far as pending code enforcement versus voluntarily coming to us and so on. We've just had a really bad pattern of behavior throughout the city on issues like this. So I'm just kind of curious, you know, what kind of stand-up people you're representing, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a series of speaker cards. The first one is Sean Madarian. I think I probably left out a syllable, I apologize.
Good evening. My name is Sean Madarian, I'm a resident of Glendale, and I am the property manager that Palladio is part of that building. What I'd like to talk about is managing the, managing buildings as, as the Palladio is, is a privilege for me, first of all. I am managing several other buildings, and I do get calls, complaints, probably every week, from all the neighbors, Neighborhood Services, and even the tenants that are in the building complaining about other tenants taking advantage of the parking lot or security purposes, or, or several other matters. However, I take pride about, of this building, that in the last five years, I have never had any complaints from Neighborhood Services, any other neighbors, tenants, or, or, for, for any reason, whether, whether it was security reasons, whether it was maintenance purposes or, or parking situation. So I, for, basically, what I'm trying to say is that the ownership has changed since 2005, and since 2005, I've been managing this building, and since then, we've never had any complaint. So if that's, if that, that will clarify any, any of the security matters, I will assure you, and I will answer any question in that regard.
Questions for the speaker? Got a couple. What is your role as it relates to securing valets and/or security people for the events? Is that part of your role?
No, I'm managing only the building.
Just the property itself?
Yes.
Understood. All right. Anything else? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker card is Stella. Gisoy, please help me on it. I'm glad you're the only Stella in the audience. It'd make that confusing.
Okay, my name is Stella Gukasian.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm a tenant at 1018 East Colorado Street. I'm here to express and to state my support for the project, or proposed project of 1018 East Colorado Street. My best knowledge, the establishment has been operating in the most professional ways possible. I have not experienced anything out of the ordinary. It is actually quite the opposite, it is more extraordinary, because you don't see all the time properties being run very well. The Palladio building has brought positive changes to the neighborhood. The building has improved and enhanced the street look on Colorado and Adams on the corner. As a tenant, I could not have asked for a more safe, secure, and clean establishment. Due to its positive ways of operation, the Palladio building has become a desired and respected location for business establishments, customers, and the community, which is very positive and great support to all of us. It allows tenants like myself and business establishments and the neighborhood to continue to operate and achieve great success in the community or in the neighborhood. And with all due respect to Mrs. Hammond, if I can comment, she brought up or raised a question earlier that why nobody's here from the surrounding areas to make a comment. There are like posters around the building, which I'm there almost every day, and they're very visible, and Colorado and Adams is a very, there's high foot traffic, there are people all the time walking, so it's pretty visible. So maybe once in a while, there's actually nobody to object or propose projects. So maybe she needs to take that in consideration, and everybody else to consider the fact of that.
Questions for the speaker?
What's, what's your business?
I have a showroom inside, so upstairs, it's an office showroom for our.
Located in that building?
Yes.
So it's one of, I think there's three retail businesses, right?
No, it's upstairs, it's just a office.
Okay.
A tenant.
And then there's two other stores, right?
No, they're downstairs, so there's nothing to.
Right.
I'm upstairs inside.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker card is Najde Martosian.
Good evening, my name is Najde Martosian. I'm living in 1015 East Lomita, few hundred feet far from Palladio. How I find out about Palladio first, one day I find out in Glendale News Press, this building built and operated by an Armenian immigrant. I said, wow, we are not new in this city, so we are almost 800 years ago we came here. So I'm living there, every day I'm passing from them few times with the car or walking there. First of all, just I'm, you know, trying to just clarify, the sign is like a billboard, you from the, maybe 100 feet, you can see the, read the sign from the, you know, hearing for today. So everybody walks there with their dogs, or, you know, in the bicycle, or just to be walking from there with the car, they can see big sign. If they have a complaint, they can come today and they can complain. I don't see, I had somebody say we, they didn't tell the neighbors, city, they didn't notify the neighbors. So big sign is there. If you live in that area, you can see, it doesn't matter, somebody lives in Montrose, cannot see the sign, but the people, they live in the neighborhood, they can see the sign. This is my first thing. The second thing, this building is very clean. Every day I see the guy is cleaning the outside and inside of, you know, that parking lot. So they do some favor to the city too, because we have only once a week, cars, they come and clean the street, but this guy, every day they clean that. That's good for us. I never heard any noise, because I, from my window, I can see the, you know, that building. I never heard any noises there. And it's very secure, and by the way, I have lots of friends. Every day, the friend is coming to visit me in my home. And we never have a problem with the parking. Sometime, and even the Fridays and the Saturdays, they have their programs, my friends, they park their car next to the Palladio, so it's an empty spot, they can park there, so their parking never bothered us. I'm not here to say, you know, what they are doing, I, there's other zoning or other things, just as a citizen, I know they are doing something good. So it's a beautiful building, good business, and I must want to support them. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker card is Simon Petrosian.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Simon Petrosian, I'm a resident of Glendale for the last 27 years, I'm doing business for the last 25 years here. And actually, I was the last one, so they said most of the things that I was supposed to say, anyway, so they make my life easy a little bit. But I can add something that I do that area since long times ago, because early 80s, my niece used to have a business just next door to that, and I used to be there almost every day. And that place was really filthy, and even sometimes filled with transient, and also there was a lot of problems, and I had, there were a lot of police activities there and all that stuff. And my profession is professional photography, and I'm always dealing with a lot of banquet halls and all that stuff, too. And I've been employed in many, 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 many tasks. And so what I want to say, when I saw that billboard, actually, it's not a billboard, just the size of just those, two of those prints that you have up there, which is pretty big, and pretty visible. And in both sides, when I saw that, there's a hearing, I came here to support that, because I haven't seen any places safer, cleaner, and more brighter at night. You can see that area is all illuminated, a lot of lights in there, cameras are everywhere, and 24/7 they're under surveillance. And I haven't heard any complaint about anything in there. And the noise, I never heard any noise, because the way the building is, has been built, all the doors are double doors, and even if you open up the door, and the walls are anti-noise or whatever special walls, I mean, when you cannot just open the door and go outside, you have to open the door and then close it and go up and the other one. And there's security in front of every door. So I haven't heard any police activity from there or anything. I'm not in shape or something, but I haven't heard anything. And that's why I came here, just to support that, because that place make that, the neighborhood looks so beautiful over there, when they did extreme makeover of that place, and that old place that I used to remember is not there anymore, it's a nice, beautiful, bright, environmentally clean, beautiful space right there. And that's, that's all I'm here for.
Thank you very much. Questions for the speaker? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker card is Margaret Hammond.
Again, Mr. Chairman, and also, my name is Margaret Hammond. Okay, I'll get on with this. Number one, all, the building is great, all out, looks great, whatnot, but that doesn't alter the fact that it does not have enough legal parking. It has 35 spaces, and right here, it says that, that there shall be, and this is from the city, there shall be, for every thousand feet square footage, there shall be 28 parking spaces. Now, there are 35, and then the square footage of this place is 6,100. That means there should be 180 spaces, okay? There are 35. Now, they're claiming that they have put the area across the street, 100 places, which is World Gym. Somebody was here earlier who goes to that gym, and he said, people come home from work every night, they're using that gym. He said, there's never even enough space for people that use the gym to park, let alone that, and I would like to see the lease on that property. I would like to see that, that that property is leased. I believe that is something I can request or whatever. The other thing, as far as the tenants, the notification. The other thing, as far as the tenants, the notification, as I brought up before, the people in the area were not notified. Those homes, if you look at this, look at the street on Elk, that all these apartments are along here, there's 200 people in those apartments. I happen to have some friends that live in them. And they were never notified. Yes, it went to the homeowners, but look at all this circling is all the ones that do not even live in Glendale. They live in Redonda Beach, Calabasas, everywhere else. They don't care. I mean, what is their quality of life affected? Those people that live there are, where are these cars going to park? If it goes till 2:00 in the morning, on a Saturday and Sunday, when people have to get up the next day, and especially on holidays? I mean, I sure as heck know I wouldn't like to have to put up with that. And you know, it's not even 50 feet from the back wall where their parking lot is to the building of the apartment. If you look at the footage, if you look at how far it is from here to here, it isn't even 50 feet. So again, I'm talking again, you know, what's right is right. And let's look at the technical part of this. If there isn't enough parking, there isn't. And it's a lot of, it's in residential, as they say, some of the parking lot. I don't understand how it could be and all that stuff. All I'm saying is, I do not think this is fair to the people that live in those apartments. And most of those, or a lot of those people are immigrants. They do not read English. I looked at the sign, yeah, there was two of them like this. Somebody called me, and I went and looked at them. But I'm saying, they do not read English. They don't understand what it means, what's going to happen there. And if they didn't get any notification directly to their home, they're not going to be looking at signs just stuck up on the side of a wire fence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No, thank you, Ms. Hammond. And the last speaker card was Artak Doolutian.
Hello, everyone. My name is Artak Doolutian. I'm with Caro Shops LLC. We own and manage the property directly across the Palladio. We've been in control of the property for about 10 years now. Prior to 2006, we had several incidences, constant issues with transients, with drunkenness, with all kinds of issues. And it was just a complete eyesore for us. Ever since 2006, since the ownership took over, they've completely renovated the building, brought everything up to code. It's cleaner, safer than what it was before. My tenants are happier, have had better success in obviously leasing and maintaining the property as well. As far as the parking is concerned, none of my tenants for the past how many years have ever complained about parking issues, and in specific with overflow of parking or even in the evenings, because I do have a restaurant on our premises as well, and they too have never complained. If anything, they've always said that the security always keeps an eye on all the surrounding properties, and they feel safer and it's a better environment to be in. So I'm thankful for that. As far as noticing and what the prior speaker said about immigrants that don't, you know, speak English or don't read, I highly disagree with her. And I do, I'm of Armenian descent, and the way she's saying is, everybody's ignorant and they don't understand English, and whoever lives in there doesn't speak or write or read English. That's incorrect. I have, we've had, we actually had a building on Elk, 630, I believe, on Elk, and we've had maybe 20 units there. And we've never had a complaint, we've never had an issue. We have, I have even have friends and relatives in that same block that have said that they've noticed the sign and read it and understand what they're reading. And they thought it was, and they said, you know, I said, do you guys have any issues with them? I'm going to go and speak. And each of them said, no, everything's good. We've never had any issues. There was never noise issues. There was no incidences, so they were happy. And they said it's actually a positive thing for the neighborhood. So as far as Margaret Hammond's concerned, I just want to reassure that the immigrants do understand English, read English, and know their rights. And as far as my tenants and as far as me, as being the property manager across the street, I'm in support of the project, on behalf of my tenants as well. Thank you. Any question?
Doesn't appear so. Thank you, sir. Oh, did you have a question?
I should thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. I have no more speaker cards, so I'm going to turn back to city staff, and I know we have some other representatives of the city here, apparently.
Yes, sir.
So depending on what you want to do, I'd like to hear from them.
Very brief, I'd like to mention that those two letters that were there in front of you, just if you wanted to recognize those, just for the record, sir, Mr. Chair, that were submitted, they were, they're emails.
Yeah, we received two emails, one from Andy Gomez, another from Liz Aminian, and both of them are in support. Thank you.
That's all I have right now. Let's hear some questions.
Well, I guess with the other, I know we have the police department here, is there Neighborhood Services or someone else?
Yes, sir, we have Neighborhood Services represented as well.
Well, let's have them come up, and we'll see if we have any questions or comments. Let's start with Neighborhood Services, I guess.
Good evening, Chairman Kane, Commissioners Renee Sada, Neighborhood Services, Inspector. Are there any questions you want me to answer, or?
Well, first, are there any statements you want to make as it relates to this case?
As noted in the staff report, we do have an open case, and the violations that we cited were for conducting banquet, private party events in excess of 30% of the serving area in a full-service restaurant nightclub in a C3 zone without the required conditional use permit, and conducting the same banquet, private party events in excess of 30% of the serving area without the required zoning use certificate in a C3 zone. So that's the noted violations.
When were those complaints made, date wise?
We cited those January 5th of this year, of 2010. Now, we did get an inquiry regarding Palladio in 2008, and I believe it was shortly after they completed their renovations, we did get inquiries to what are they allowed to operate as? And we did have discussions among staff. As we know, there was that non-conforming restaurant, what were they allowed to do and whatnot. The definition of banquet hall wasn't in place, I believe, during the previous occupant, Leonardo's nightclub. So we were monitoring the property. And then during 2009, we noted that they were conducting private parties using 100% of the serving area. So we decided that we will cite them for that, because per their zoning use certificate, they are a, the current zoning certificate, if I'm not mistaken, they are a restaurant and nightclub. So in our opinion, they would have to adhere to the 30% rule regarding private parties in serving areas. So that was why we cited them, and this approval would remedy that, those violations. So that's pretty much the genesis of our case. It wasn't as much as a complaint regarding noise or parking, it was just an inquiry by a concerned citizen about what are they supposed to operate as. So that kind of started the whole ball rolling. As Mr. Baxter did allude to, formal complaints regarding property maintenance or other issues, the last one we did receive was in 2004, and it was regarding a homeless person hanging around the parking lot. And until then, we have not received any complaints about noise, parking, or the banquet hall use, up until this date.
All right. Any questions for Neighborhood Services? I think you've addressed what my questions would have been. Thank you very much, sir.
Very much, sir.
Will the Police Department again approach?
Good evening again. Steve Davy from the Police Department. The Police Department's received two calls for service in the last several months. I believe in the prior hearing this morning, I stated it was six months. I reviewed my notes, it was actually 10 months that we received two calls for service. So they're fairly low, obviously. One was a male causing a disturbance, and another one was somebody had fallen down a facility, you know, a person injured type of call. And that's been it.
Questions for the Police Department?
Which sums it up.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from staff at this time? All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may just clarify one technical matter about the zoning code. We knew that this operation needed to have permits as a banquet hall. They also indicated that they wanted to have the option of operating as a restaurant. And we said, well, you have to apply as a nightclub, because you have a dance floor greater than 200 square feet. But we tried, I think the conditions that are proposed here, try to ensure the fact that as a quote nightclub, it has to close at 11:00 AM or 12:00 AM, means, our goal with that was to ensure that they really don't become a Studio One-type operation.
I guess I have one question for staff at this moment. Obviously, we had a speaker that was identifying an issue with the parking count, and just to reiterate, you guys, you guys, staff has reviewed and the parking is being provided per code.
Yes. Yes. Short answer is yes. Yes. It's a technical thing.
There's no reason to make it a long one if the short one's yes.
Just a little longer.
Please.
Is that, I'm sorry. Is adequate for the current approved use? Yes.
All right. Ms. Landrigan?
Thank you. Sorry. Call us out, so I'm sorry.
That's right.
I'd like to ask staff, the hours of operation that are proposed, including the holiday hours of operation, are those commonplace for banquets and or nightclub? Are those extraordinary, out of the ordinary?
My experience is only this one facility with these hours, so I am not familiar with others. I would have to defer and see if there's any memory here for...
Is there any elective memory on that, Mr. Foy?
I know that the, there are not that many places that have CUPs as banquet halls. Most of the ones are grandfathered in. I could go check a couple files that I can think of, if you'd like me to get the answer for that. I think it's 2:00 AM normally, but I'd have to check to be certain.
We tend to have that part, the 2:00 AM thing is fairly standard. The idea, again, goes back to this idea that the existing nightclub use, which is assembly, has an approval Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That's the current one right now, from 5:00 until 2:00 AM. So that's what the current one is. So the 2:00 AM is the, if you notice, there's one thing that's a little different here, condition number nine is a nightclub. We tried to delineate this, and we have shorter times, because it's like Mr. Foy was saying, the idea was to have it as a restaurant, but as soon as you have this dance floor, you're bumped into this nightclub thing, right off the bat. You can't go back. You're a nightclub. And so based on that, we were saying, well, maybe we can keep it closer to a restaurant type hours, even as a nightclub. And so that's where we were coming up with.
So that was driven from staff, not the applicant?
No, yeah, all these are pretty much driven from us, really. We really worked on this. See, if you'll notice, when we took this application into the time that has been taken in that you're hearing it, it's been a long time. And a lot, part of it is that we go back to the applicant, say, you know something? We need some additional information. And then they would struggle around and come up with new information, because we were trying to go, and I'm not talking about like we were pulling teeth, they were trying to respond to us and vice versa, to try to make a realistic application, so that we don't get in this contradictory situation of all of a sudden, you walk out there, and what is it? And everybody feels like it's a shell game. We were trying to get away from it. So you don't see nightclub use and banquet hall use in a lot of places. You're going to see one or the other type of thing. But we're trying to make this realistic, something that can be enforceable. If you look at condition number eight, for instance, this whole thing that we, our little definitions and things that we tried, the last part, where we have additionally, the last, I believe it's the last two sentences there, where we tried to really make this work.
Is there, wait, can we condition the maximum occupancy? Bring that number lower, like what, touching on?
Well, they're, it's driven by building code, fire codes. That's where the occupancy comes from. So it's driven by that, and that's driven by the type of use and the size of the facility. I don't, you can condition anything. If you want to say, not occupancy, but the number of patrons, that would be your call.
Mr. Garcia is indicating we can't.
One, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, is that it is governed by the fire code, and that's the fire marshal will then measure based on the amount of square footage. And then it is difficult to enforce from a planning or zoning perspective, and it's really within the fire marshal's purview. Conditions that could be imposed are limiting the square footage that's used, which then has the indirect effect.
Not patrons?
Not patrons.
Yeah. It just seems, I mean, just what Commissioner Landrigan said earlier, it just seems odd. I know that they talk about having 200 people for their receptions, but technically, they can have, what, 600 people? They can book it for 600 legally, right? But, I mean, the parking doesn't meet that at all.
Yes, sir. No, I agree. I understand the, it's fully understandable. This is a, we've gone round and round on this. We fully understand.
So you're just giving the benefit of the doubt to the owner that that's not going to happen?
Our experience at this point, in the last 2005, 2006, has been that they haven't had the complaints or the problems with this facility. Doesn't mean it can't happen in future. That's why we have deadlines on these timelines that expire, so that we can revisit it and re-study it, to see whether there's problems. And if there are problems, then we have the ability at the time to try to solve the problem. I mean, worst-case scenario, it's, you know, you revoke it. That's worst-case scenario. We have the authority under the code to revoke an approval and say, I'm sorry, so out of consistency with what you asked for, and you're such a problem in this community that you're not allowed to operate. That is the worst-case scenario. But then we can also condition things. We may, we come back here, let's say we have a timeline, we all finish it up at 2013. Say we tie it in with the existing one, for instance, and they come back in 2013, and they're operating pretty much like they are now, which appears not to have any problems, then they're a good business. If you'll notice, there's a lot of conditions in there that just don't seem to be consistent with the type of use that the applicants described. And a lot of these are driven by the police department and their experience. And I even spoke with Lieutenant Davy about it and said, well, what about these? And he made a good point that I thought was that, you know, the current tenant may not be a problem. Let's say the current tenant sells his place, and the land use carries this approval. And the new tenant comes in, and let's say he starts deviating, his nightclub banquet type facility, well, we have these conditions, the backstop that, say, okay, we're sort of covering everything, and we've done a shotgun thing, and that's why we got so many conditions, pretty broad, trying to address noise and smoking, and there's a lot of these issues, the security, lighting, all these things.
So what's the timeframe for this?
Well, right now, it's open-ended. The existing approval for the restaurant nightclub.
Right, that's what we're going to...
Is in 2013. That's what the existing one. So if this thing goes away right now, and they have to go back to just running a nightclub and a restaurant, they have that approval until 2013. I think it's like February, something like that. It's right here, but it's, they have approval for that.
Ms. Landrigan, you have a question?
I do. This is for staff. When I was with the city of Santa Monica, when there was an event that increased the parking demand, the city would ask that leases be on file with the city for additional parking that would exceed the 35 or whatever that would accommodate that. Is that a condition that we could put in here that, due to the fact that when it's a banquet hall, there may be additional parking required, and that, because if there is a change of owner... Because if there is a change of ownership and these leases go with the owner and not with the conditional use permit, then the next person could come in and highly impact the neighborhood and not have the good intentions nor the good business acumen that we see right now. So to me, the concern is that when that happens, rather than wait until we have a problem, it would be to our advantage to ask that the existing leases for those parking lots be on file with the city that indicates to us that they are, they have and will accommodate the kind of possible crowds that a banquet hall could draw.
Well, that is a good...
Let's ask Mr. Garcia whether we can do that. Mr. Garcia?
Members of the commission, I think that's permissible, especially if it's been offered by the applicant, that they are providing additional parking in addition to what they're required to provide by code.
Where would that be on file, with the planning department?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Now, please continue with what your thoughts were on it.
Well, I was going to say the same thing.
Oh, okay.
I don't see why that couldn't occur. We have it on file. We could look at... It's an issue where it is, at this point, they meet the code requirement. I realize that's an issue that we're, that everybody's struggling, including the planning department. But they do meet the requirements. So whatever else they have is their, if it's voluntary. So if we have the lease on, we can have the lease, but it's, they're volunteering to use that lease. They're not required to have a lease to park off site at another location. So it's either choice on that. Because if the next guy comes in, they may not even recognize that lease. And there's nothing that requires this facility to recognize that lease.
But a condition would.
Well, I guess a condition might.
Well, that's, but that's what we're hearing a little different. And Mr. Garcia, you worded it as a voluntary thing. That's different than us making it a condition.
No, not necessarily. I was just making the observation that they had...
That they're volunteering to make it a condition?
Right.
What we think the problem is, is if the new owner has some, is unable to obtain that same lease for, let's say, the price that he wants, or let's say he doesn't want to use this particular place, then we'd be in violation of that condition. I guess it could be done.
Well, but clearly, to build on what Commissioner Landerga is saying, you know, they're making a big deal. They're saying, hey, one of the reasons that there's not a parking problem is we've got this lease. So that's definitely going to be a potential consideration in our discussions later. Other questions for staff at this time? All right, we're going to allow the applicant his rebuttal time.
It's not really a rebuttal, Mr. Chairman. It's just a friendly discussion.
And it wasn't an argument either.
I just wanted to be sure we were clear on that. I wanted to clarify a couple of points with regard to the parking, just so that we're... Comments were made with regard to the gym, World Gym. World Gym closes on Fridays at 8:00 and on Saturday and Sunday at 6:00. When Palladio does its parking, it begins with its 36 or 35-space parking facility. And since the valet is there, he can then add 70, whatever it is, 70 to 80 spaces. Then it moves to the parking lot that is just next door on the other side of Palladio. Mr. Koschejian owns that parking lot, so he can use that if he needs to. And then at the end all of this, if there's an additional need for parking spaces, the valet can then park across the street on the leased parking. You had asked, Mr. Chairman, in relation to the lease, we would voluntarily provide the lease, as the city attorney had mentioned. You know, that would be something that if we've been asked, we would voluntarily do it. With regard to the issue of security, the issue of complaints, there's not much more to say. We believe that we've been a good business, that this property in the last five years has, in fact, made a significant improvement in the area. And we are going to hopefully be able to continue to do that. And with that, Mr. Chairman?
Do you know what the current lease term is when it's set to expire?
I don't. Do you have a lease term?
Month to month?
On year 50, it's obviously you, so that's not the issue.
The 100 that was testified that's leased, is that month to month? Or do you have an actual formal lease?
We had a full... One and a half year.
Approximately a year and a half. Okay, and I'm repeating it because since you're not at a microphone. All right, so the testimony is about one year on the current lease?
On the current lease, yeah.
And that would be provided, okay? Any other questions for the speaker right now? I see none?
I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the commission, and also the staff. Mr. Baxter, Mr. Foy have been very, very helpful. We've been working together for a number of months now, and I wanted to commend staff also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll close the public hearing and our deliberations. Who would like to go first that hasn't already this evening?
I'll go. Oh.
You did already? Well, you want to go again? Go for it. I was letting you off the hook.
I just have to say, I'm really impressed by the property every time I drive by it. I don't want to repeat what everybody said, but I am so impressed by it. And I think it's an exceptional property. And I wish we have more examples like that in Glendale. It looks very good for the city. I would be in support of the application. I'm indifferent, really, for that additional condition. But I would be okay with that as well. And I would be okay granting it for till 2013 as the date to have this or coincide it with the current lease that they have. And I'm just very happy with the property and I want to be supportive. And I think this is a use that's been gone on for a while and it's been fine. And I want to also mention that it's very rare that we have letters that actually support this, what's happening. And even, one of the people wasn't even notified of it, but they were notified from Margaret Hammond and they wrote the letter in support of it, too. So it's very rare we see that. So I'm happy with it and I'm supportive of it.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Landerga.
Well, I'm impressed also. I respect Ms. Hammond's viewpoints and I appreciate her notifying neighbors. And I saw the letters and I drive by the site frequently and I think it has been improved considerably. I'm all for legitimizing activities if they're well-done. I would, I have two questions. One is, it looks to me that condition 21 and 27 are almost identical. I think that we could remove 21 and keep 27. They don't.
They're redundant.
They're redundant.
Or they really, really...
Or they really, really mean it. So that's interesting. 27 does the trick. I would like to add...
Would you like to get rid of 21 then?
Yes.
Okay, 21, all right.
See, that's a deal breaker for me. I think you need to get rid of 27.
You don't like that.
No, continue on, I'm sorry. Continue on, I'm sorry.
So I would like to propose a condition that the applicant shall provide off-site parking through leases or other agreements that will accommodate banquet clients for an additional 100 spaces. I'm not going to add both of them. I think that's a reasonable addition. And these leases will be kept on file with the planning staff. I wrote it out. Does that sound...
When somebody proposes a motion, that seems reasonable to us.
That's what I think would... I'm also comfortable with the 2013. I think that if there were going to be complaints, we would have had them and that people would have come out in droves. That did not appear to happen.
Fair enough. You're out of order. Mr. Sheets?
Okay. I'll start out as the other commissioners. I think the building is great. I think the usage, the activities have been accepted in the neighborhood and it's a great improvement. Sometimes I look at these issues from a broader, broader look and possibly unintended consequences. But I'll tell you, before starting my comments, I have not made up my mind. But I'm disappointed that it was used illegally for a number of years. And I say that not about just your establishment. It's a history that I see common to banquet halls, and that troubles me. I don't know what that means. I don't know why it happens, but I don't approve of that. The parking issue, banquet halls have a history of parking issues. And the bad thing is, when we do have people complain, the establishment always says, well, we didn't do it or we're going to fix it, it's never going to happen again. But it does. We have a history of problems with valet parking in neighborhoods. Nothing for your establishment, obviously. But I'm just giving you a history that is in my mind about banquet halls per se. Parking lots are not assured, even if you own them. You may not want to, in 10 years or five years, you may want to sell that property. It's not assured. It's not a done deal. It's working now, that's great. I think in cases like this, if we approve a banquet hall here in an area that it's not allowed, forgetting all the things that have happened, I'm looking at this as this case and we're going to approve it, we want to approve a banquet hall in a zone that doesn't allow it. If we look beyond this situation, if we approve this and then go beyond it, there may be other, it'll open a door for others to say, well, you know, you've already done it. It might set a precedent. And the obvious thing about parking is that these neighborhoods are all dense in our community. And parking is an issue, whether it's banquet halls, restaurants, corner store, parking is an issue. It's a very sensitive issue. So I am concerned just about authorizing a banquet hall with all the bad history that has occurred with other banquet halls. So I'm not sure that's very clear. I know it's not something that the party wants to hear, but that's my feelings. Now, I have not made up my mind and I'm still trying to weigh what would be best for this issue based on the good things you've done. And obviously, you've done a lot of good things and obviously, there are no complaints. I think that weighs a lot. And I think that is to your benefit. So I wanted you to just be aware and I wanted the public to be aware of my concerns about banquet halls and issues that I've heard from people and concerns that I've had. So I'm done.
Well, I think Mr. Sheets hits it on the head several times. Parking, parking, parking. That's always the issue. It's, sometimes it's the clientele, but it's usually parking. We've had testimony tonight that there really haven't been any complaints to the police, not directly related to the property or not significantly so. Neighborhood services complaining is directly related to the fact of what we're meeting on today. It goes back to parking. It goes back to, as we've identified, if conditions change, the availability of lots and things like that, it's going to suddenly impact the community far more than it has been. Now, where we're at is, it was a bad property a number of years ago, five years, six years, whatever the timeframe was. A number of years ago, it was a bad property, which again emphasizes the whole concern about the property. Current ownership, the building looks great. You're sincere. You're doing things the right way. So for current ownership, pretty comfortable with what's going on. Wouldn't have a problem in granting the use variance at all. Concerned about what happens in the future. That's one of the reasons that I'm glad we have a sunset clause on this. I was originally thinking two years, but if this expires in 20... I believe staff indicated the early part of 2013. That's like two years, four months. That's close enough for me. So it's important in this conversation that we have that sunset clause. Because if the leases disappear, if the parking disappears, it's a whole different ballgame. And if we have a motion and if we vote for the use variance, it is totally related to your ability to provide adequate parking. If that disappears, two and a half years or, you know, in 2013, you're going to have a very serious discussion with whoever happens to be up on this board. I, as I mentioned earlier, have some problems with the hours of operations. And I'm just going to broach it again in terms of this Sunday to 2:00 a.m. You know, Sunday to 2:00 a.m. is fine if the next day is Memorial Day or Labor Day. But, you know, if it's quote-unquote a school night or a work night, you know, I get concerned about it. Now, we're not having testimony, we're not having, or we don't have a testimony of complaints where the, you know, the nearby apartment people or nearby residents have been complaining about noise and being kept awake. So, you know, I'm prepared to go quietly in the night. But I would also, you know, urge that we look at that Sunday operation to 2:00 a.m. before we go to motion. And in regards to that, let me just kind of survey my fellow commissioners and start with you, Commissioner San. What are you thinking about the hours of operation? Any concerns on your part?
Honestly, I think because of the property, I think it's exceptional, the circumstances. And I don't see this often in many places in Glendale. Just because of that, I want to give the benefit of the doubt to the owner. I like the idea of coinciding with the lease because I don't know what the next owner is going to be like. But I want, I almost want this to be an example to other people in Glendale that, you know, if you spend the time and if you have good relationship with the neighbors and you invest enough in your property, that we're going to give you the benefit of the doubt on some of these things. You know, and you spend the time on fixing your parking, on leasing an extra space that's more than your required space, on making sure your property is clean every day and everybody has positive comments to it. I want, I'm just going to be okay with the way it is right now, especially because we haven't had any complaints with it. We're going to have a sunset clause. We're going to revisit it. If there are complaints, we can always change it. And so I'm okay with that. If you guys go with the change, I'll go with that as well. So I'll be okay either way. But I think it's fine the way it is.
Good comments. Ms. Landerga?
I understand your concern about the holidays and I think they're valid concerns. I also look at what a banquet hall does and some of those events are really based around holidays. So to me, I understand where it's coming from as a holiday being, you know, if you're in a Jewish holiday, your Sabbath starts at sundown, so your parties start later, they go longer. I mean, to me, I see, I see the rationale in both areas. Frankly, I don't know if I'd want to live near a place that had parties at that time. So I totally agree with you. Since there's been a very good neighborhood relationship, I almost feel that that would be something I would be open to looking at. If Sunday's the biggest day, I'm interested in discussing it with you. I see the banquet halls position and I also see being a neighbor's position.
Mr. Sheets, your thoughts?
I think if I would be in support and I would take the leap of faith that they are as sincere as they present themselves, which I believe they are, and they were going to allow the use. And we, as you mentioned earlier, we're going to have the sunset... to allow the use, and we, as you mentioned earlier, we're going to have the sunset clause. It's not so much that I'm in support of the late hours, it's just I don't know what I'd change it to. So, that probably, I would probably want to leave that in the business owner's hands. And then, when it comes around for review later, if that's an issue, that's something that we would have to address. I think, I think that would be bad for me.
Yeah. And there's a part of me that readily agrees to that, then there's another part that goes, yeah, but we've got two years and four months of, you know, Sunday at 2:00 a.m. operations.
Maybe not.
Huh?
It's okay to do that, but it might not happen all the time. I mean--
No, no. It's a potential, right. It's not, it's not, obviously. Right, 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 right. I was, I wasn't assuming that would be every Sunday. You know, it'd be great for their business, but--
They wish.
But I think also, I suppose, the idea of the complaints coming in and staff being able to start reacting to it, you know, gives me some relief. So, I'm willing to back away from that right now. You know, we've made pretty clear our concerns about parking, hours of operation. The applicant's been hearing it. He knows what he'll face in two years and four months, or whatever the date is, if they don't continue to operate in the way they apparently have been. Anything else to add, or would someone like to make a motion?
I would add just a comment. Still making up my mind, I guess I would say I feel strongly about my comments that I made about type of usage and the problems. Should I, I think the item that might sway me is the issue of this type of property, having gone through this many years--
Yes.
--with multiple uses that all seem to lean towards public use and, you know, certain amounts of people. So, I feel strongly, if we were bringing this forward just to make a banquet hall come into a residential area, I would have no problems with my decision. The fact that this property has evolved as it has would be the one thing that would make me, that could make me go that way, relative to my concerns. So, that's just one add I would like to make.
Yeah. The long-term history actually sways me quite a bit, too. And again, I'll use the, I think it was in the previous case where I said, my attitude of things like this is you get one file--
That's right.
--and then you're out. So, given those kind of standards, I will suspect that if we're not on the board in two and a half years, because we've gone on to greater things, or lesser things, that the board will have similar attitudes on these types of stuff. So, that said, again, unless there's other comments. Public hearing's closed. I'm sorry, staff. Does it, oh, we have to acknowledge the secret. Thank you. I opened the public hearing for just a second for him to say that. We do need to acknowledge the negative declaration. And let's do that first with a motion, and then let's move on and search for another motion.
How do we, we move to do the--
I move that we accept the environmental impact. Mitigated negative deck.
Yes.
Negative declaration.
Negative deck.
Negative declaration.
2010-006.
2010-006.
Second.
I'm sorry?
To adopt it.
To adopt it.
We have a motion, support?
Second.
I'm sorry. I thought you already had.
Oh.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. On a vote of four to zero, the negative declaration, P E I F 2010-006, has been approved. Seeking a motion for the use variance?
Aye. Okay, I'll go ahead and move it. Are we adding, is there a condition?
There was a suggested condition about placing the lease agreement on file--
Okay.
--for the, the 100-space lease agreement. 100-space lease agreement.
The 100's on file now, once this is approved?
That's a, that's one of the conditions.
Right, okay. So, I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to use variance number PV AR 2010-006 located on 1018 East Colorado Street, and after having conducted a hearing on said matter, the planning commission hereby approves said year, I'm sorry, said use variance case number PV AR 2010-006 to modify the existing nightclub use and operate a new banquet hall use with alcoholic beverages, sales, service, and consumption located at 1018 East Colorado Street in the C3 commercial services zone described as portion of Lot 6, Block 13, Byram Patterson and Miller subdivision in the City of Glendale, County of Los Angeles, in accord with the findings and conditions set forth below, and also with the added condition--
Added condition?
--that we're going to require a lease contract available for the additional 100 spaces.
Parking spaces.
Parking, parking spaces.
Please send file with parking, with planning.
Place on file with the planning department.
And you want to strike item 21, condition 21, as, since it's redundant, to 27?
So, okay. And we're also striking out item number 21, because it's redundant with item number 27?
And then, finally, you want to establish the term.
And that the authorization granted herein shall be valid for a period of until 2013?
Well, it will expire at the same time as the existing CUP.
February 9, 2013, which is, I guess, the time the lease expires?
No, simultaneous to the existing.
With the existing lease.
Checking conditional use permit.
CUP.
Okay, additional CUP.
There we go.
Okay.
Well crafted. We have a motion seeking support.
Second.
Motion support. Call roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. On a vote of four to zero, conditional, I'm sorry, not conditional, use variance case, PV AR 20-10, 2010-006 has been approved. Planning Department updates, please.
At this time, we don't have any items showing on our agenda for October 20th, so it looks like we'll be maybe canceling that meeting. And there's still a few more days in case, a case does come forward. We may be scheduling something, but at this point, it doesn't look like we have anything pending. And then, on November 3rd, that will be our following meeting, our first meeting in November. It looks like, right now, we have one case, and then also one presentation that we'll be making concerning parking. And at that time, we'll also be distributing information to you about proposed downtown parking standards, which you'll be considering at the meeting following that, which would be the second meeting in November.
All right. Comments from commissioners. Ms. Landergren?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, based upon today's two testimonies here, one of the things I am troubled by is the fact that although we follow state law, we miss a lot of the ability to notify the individuals who live adjacent to these properties. So, I know that we have zoning cleanup, a zoning advisory commission, not a commission, advisory board, and I would like that this be an item that is brought up during that time, so that it becomes part of the zoning cleanup.
That becomes tenants notified as well as--
That tenants, as well as, exactly. Thank you.
Great suggestion.
I second it.
Well, we're not taking official action.
Yes.
Anything else?
Is that, you guys went on, on the advisory board on Monday?
Yeah. Spent a lot of time talking about artificial turf and real turf.
And we fought over our own turf.
Yes. Well said. Anything, not much to report.
Okay.
It was all about artificial turf.
Anything else?
I move that we adjourn.
We are adjourned.
All right. Thank you.